I got six o'clock, shall we?
Let's do it. Lisa's gonna start the recording, recording started.
Good evening and welcome to tonight's study session of the Boulder City Council. I am Councilmember Ryan Schuhardt and thank you for joining us. And congrats BBSD families for getting out of school a few hours ago for the year. Uh, good luck, on what's next? We have on tonight's agenda, two items, our first will be a public safety overview and discussion. Our second item is the draft community wildfire protection plan discussion. Before we go into our work items, I would like to outline how the meeting will be conducted. We will review staff's presentation for each item, then we will have time for questions. At the end of presentations, we will conduct our council discussion staff. If you have questions, please wait for staff to complete their presentation. We will now turn to our city manager, Nurya Rivera Vandermeide, to introduce our first item.
Thanks so much, Councilmember Schuhardt. Um, as you'll recall, when you and some of your colleagues came on board at this new council term, we did a series of luncheon learns and got to know a little bit of our departments, uh, do a little bit of a deeper dive. Um, and there were a couple of topics that we did some of those deeper dives on. Uh, Councilmember Adams, uh, asked CAC to actually do an uplift this, uh, one on, uh, BPD, a little bit of public safety to do one more publicly and asked to bring it forward, uh, as a public, as a study session, and thank you, Councilmember Adams for that. And so here we are, uh, with a presentation and I am going to send it over, uh, to our interim chief, Steve Redfern. And before he starts, I want to say that there's a lot of information and I know that there's a lot of interest in this topic. Um, I will say that we pulled the interim chief back because he has so much information to share. Uh, I want to note that there, uh, is an upcoming update as well, as you know, that, um, uh, Judge Khan and, um, BPD, uh, interim chief have an opportunity as well on June thirteenth to provide their quarterly update and there will also be an opportunity there to present their quarterly stats, what's happening in community as well. And so there will be, um, additional opportunity there to, uh, ask the chief some questions. And with that, um, Steve, I will pass it on to you.
Great, thank you, Nurya. Uh, good evening, everyone, Steve Redfern, I am the interim police chief here. Um, happy to be here tonight to talk, uh, we have a lot, lot to cover. I'll try to do it quickly, but I feel like, uh, to, to be responsive to a lot of inquiries and questions. Uh, we packed a lot into this presentation, we'll obviously leave a lot of time for questions at the end. Uh, with me tonight, uh, if needed, uh, during the presentation, you'll also hear from Chief of Staff Alistair McNiven and our Chief Data Analyst, Dr. Daniel Reinhardt. I've also got Deputy Chief Ron Gosage and Deputy Chief Barry Harcup on the call to offer their expertise if needed, if things come up. So with that, if we could start the presentation. Next slide, please. So a real quick overview before we dive in, I'm gonna give kind of a department overview, understanding that we have new council members and for the community that may not be that familiar. I'm gonna talk about our staffing, some of our, uh, the way we are, are, uh, set up. I'm gonna talk about then our Kalia accreditation that we're excited to talk about and give you an update on reimagined policing since it's been a few months. Um, some public safety information, I'm gonna hit on a couple of, uh, cases real quick and, and Dr. Reinhardt's going to provide us a little bit of data, understanding as the city manager said, we've got a meeting coming up next month with more. Next slide, please. Uh, most of you that have been on council for a while are familiar with our makeup, but just real briefly, I'm not gonna go into every part of this organizational chart, but just to give you an idea of how we are made up. Uh, the majority of our staff are assigned to patrol and detectives and then we've got some special units I'll talk about. And we've got about fifty-five of our staff that are non-commissions or they're not sworn police officers that are in support roles in a variety of functions that I'll get into here in a minute as well. Next slide, please. So the question we're asked frequently out in the community and by, uh, our partners is what is the staffing like currently at BPD? Uh, right now, uh, we are authorized to have a hundred and ninety-one sworn officers. Uh, we have a hundred and sixty-nine currently sworn. Uh, we keep every time we seem to be getting, uh, closer to full staffing, we have retirements and other departures, but, um, we've had really good success lately in hiring. And so, uh, we have ten officers of that one hundred and sixty-nine that are in training, so they're not, uh, solo patrol officers yet, uh, but in the next couple of months, they'll be out, uh, on the street. And we've just been in a very aggressive hiring campaign, uh, where we have about twenty-one potential officers in background, uh, process right now. We will likely offer jobs to fifteen to eighteen of those, uh, officers in the next couple of weeks to get them into a police academy to hopefully, uh, get them back here and out on the street. Uh, of the staff that were down, we're down one commander due to the interim appointments. We're down six detectives, nine traffic officers and six patrol officers. As we bring on additional staff, uh, we're constantly looking at where the need is to backfill, uh, those positions. Uh, you may know that we run the Dispatch Center for the city of Boulder, both police, uh, Fire 911, OSMP and other entities are dispatched twenty-four seven here in our building. Uh, we are down about three dispatch positions, which is really good. Uh, they're also actively recruiting for that very difficult but important job. Uh, we also here have animal protection, uh, they're, they're great, uh, partners in the community. They're fully staffed, I'm very happy to say, so that's great and they're doing great work. I mentioned the fifty-five non-police positions, non-sworn police. Uh, all of those are actually fully staffed except for our record section, they're down about four people. Uh, they're also actively recruiting for those, you can see the list of other, uh, entities there that we have in-house. Next slide, please. So just a, a real quick overview of some of the special units we have. Uh, I obviously mentioned staffing, we're here twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, um, with patrol, uh, and other units. Our specialty units, um, our teams that have a special assignment that focus on a particular, uh, type of crime or problem. Uh, as you see there, pictured as one of our new e-bikes that we've had great success with downtown, I'm gonna talk about that in a minute. Uh, because we're not that big, we're not a huge city where we can have a full-time, uh, especially unit in every different, uh, arena. A lot of our staff that are full-time have collateral duties, so that means they have a, uh, a duty other than their main job that they're, uh, part of, and I'll talk more about that. And then just an update, because we've talked about it quite a bit in past council sessions. Uh, we're still heavily engaged in our stratified policing, uh, evidence-based crime reduction model. That is our proactive policing strategy. Um, we, we're having a lot of success in bringing down the focused crimes as well as problem areas and problem locations, which I will talk more about a little bit tonight and definitely more in June. Next slide, please. Excuse me, so, uh, two slides real quick on some specialty teams, just so you know, um, what else we have out there, uh, working on the street. Uh, our neighborhood impact team is a, is a definite asset for us, they are the team that's mainly assigned to University Hill. All of the officers on that team have direct liaison relationships with different fraternities and sororities and they, especially when it's back to school, go, uh, interact with those entities and do a lot of training, especially for new students. Uh, we, um, also that team is specialized in different investigations, they, uh, when, when school is out, for example, this summer, they focus on things like stolen cars, uh, firearms-related crimes and such. Uh, our Pearl Street Mall team, I'm very happy to say is completely full, uh, we are fully staffed, uh, at this time. Both foot patrol and our bike patrol, including e-bikes downtown, I'm gonna talk about a recent success that that team had in a moment. Uh, our homeless outreach team, you may have seen, has had some recent very positive news coverage, uh, for the amazing work that they do, the compassionate work they do. Uh, they are cops, but their main goal isn't enforcement, their main goal is to work with all of our partners to try to figure out how to get people out of homelessness. Uh, this team is incredibly compassionate, I know several council members have gone out and experienced ride-alongs with that team, uh, and have found it very beneficial. Uh, our traffic unit, uh, is, uh, mainly obviously tasked with handling vehicle crashes. Uh, they're also tasked with enforcement, so they are out, uh, doing traffic enforcement in our, uh, high-crash locations and working with other city entities to reduce crashes. Uh, we do have both sworn and civilian, uh, crash investigators in our traffic section. Next slide, please. So a couple more here real quick, uh, we're having, uh, we're really enjoying having our canine unit back. It was brought back last year, as you see there, that is our, uh, only canine is Canine Astro and she's just doing a great job. Um, you'll see her Monday at Boulder Boulder, she'll be out, uh, along the route and at different venues sniffing to make sure there are no explosives and we've had, uh, a lot of great success with Astro as well. She can sniff out firearms as well as recently fired shell casing. So if we have a crime where we're certain that somebody might have been armed, maybe they threw a gun somewhere, Astro comes out and can help us locate that, it's a great tool. Uh, community engagement, you're gonna hear me talk more about. It's one of our big priorities here, we only have one officer assigned to community engagement right now. It's the responsibility of all of us, um, but Mitch Trujillo, as many of you know from council and other, uh, places in the community is amazing. We're really looking as we get fully staffed, one of my priorities is to add at least two more officers to that team, uh, to help, uh, in different areas of the city. Um, our training team, uh, is a full-time team that helps train not only our new officers when they come to us out of the police academy, but also the ongoing recurring training that we all must have to remain certified as peace officers in the state. Um, lastly, we have our motorcycle team that's part of our traffic section. Hopefully, none of you have met them out on the roadways because their main goal is traffic enforcement. They're also trained to, uh, investigate crashes, many of them have the highest level of certification, uh, level four traffic crash investigations, uh, to do reconstruction on serious and fatal traffic crashes. Next slide, please. So I mentioned earlier collateral duties, um, there's a lot here on this slide, I'm not gonna talk about each of them in depth, uh, but just for example, we don't have a full-time SWAT team or bomb squad, so all of our team members have other jobs, uh, but they have, uh, ancillary duties on the collateral team. So for example, we have a detective, that, that's his day job, but he's also part of our bomb squad. So when there's a need for that, he steps into that role. Um, things like our peer support team, our U, our UAS team, bomb squad, hostage negotiators, uh, crime scene investigations. Um, we're really happy about, uh, some of the progress we've made this year with our community liaisons. Um, very recently, we've added three, uh, new LGBTQ plus liaisons, they've gone through, uh, training with OutBoulder in, uh, that role as well as, uh, bias-motivated crime investigations. We have a new, uh, liaison to the Jewish community, we also have a liaison with the Muslim community and we're, we're working on some other, uh, great projects right now with, uh, that area as well. Uh, so we have CIT, which is Crisis Intervention Training, the majority of our officers are trained in CIT and that does not take the place of a clinician, but what that does is provide our officers with additional training and de-escalation, dealing with people in crisis, things of that nature. Um, and as you know, we also have our CERT team, uh, that's through Housing and Human Services that go out on calls with our officers, uh, when someone is in crisis or needs additional expertise. Uh, and then we also are, um, working, we don't really work with CARES because we're not a part of that, but we are, uh, uh, we dispatch for them here in the police department and are well aware of their efforts. Uh, next slide, please. So when I talk about reimagined policing, I'll talk a little bit more about this, but I know this was a specific question from at least one council member recently about what we are doing for wellness for our staff. Um, we understand, uh, that no matter what a great plan we have through, uh, reimagined policing or any other of our endeavors, if our staff are not coming to work physically and mentally well, uh, we know the bad things that can happen both to them or, uh, end up in something that doesn't go well out on the street because they're going out on the street unwell. And so we're really focused on our staff wellbeing, both our, our officers, civilian staff, and you'll see several examples on this screen of things we're doing for our department families. Sometimes it's much, uh, harder to be at home, uh, wondering if your loved one is okay than being the one actually out there running into a bad situation. And so we know those stresses that come with being a family of law enforcement and we, we brought in some great resources there as well. Um, a lot of different things on here, peer support, we've, uh, really worked to strengthen our peer support program and we just renewed our contract with our police psychologist. Of note, uh, our visits to our police psychologists have gone up and that's really, I think, a good thing because we have tried to de-stigmatize the use of such services. We've, uh, seen the aftermath of King Supers and we know we still have staff that are seeing, uh, long-term, uh, psychological services for that, but we look at that as a good thing, we want them to be well and come to work well. Next slide, please. So kind of, uh, changing gears here a little bit, I'm gonna talk about Kalia real quick. Um, so we are currently in the process of becoming Kalia accredited. Uh, Kalia stands for the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. It's been around for quite some time, since nineteen seventy-nine. And I, just for context, about only five percent of police departments and sheriff's offices in the United States are Kalia accredited, about one in twenty agencies. Um, we have been accredited for over fifteen years through the Colorado Association of Chiefs of Police, but Kalia really is the gold standard in accreditation, it's a national accreditation process. It usually takes about three years and we're about two years in. Um, what we've found so far is that it's been incredibly beneficial for us to look at all of our policies as a requirement of Kalia, to go through each policy to ensure the policies are in line with best practices so we can get accredited. Um, with any luck, we are gonna have a mock assessment here within the next few months and then hopefully the full assessment in the end of twenty-four, of early twenty-five, where assessors will come in from all over the country and be here at BPD ensuring that we meet the qualifications to be accredited. Uh, that is an ongoing process that will have to continue to be re-accredited after that initial accreditation, but we're excited about it and we'll keep you updated. Next slide, please. So I wanna give a little bit of update on reimagined policing. Um, so excited to share with you that since, uh, council unanimously approved our reimagined policing plan last fall, that we are continuing to fully, uh, embrace this plan, we're full speed ahead on implementing a lot of the things uh, that this plan called for. Uh, we really do use this plan as kind of our guiding document, uh, when we're thinking about a new project, a new thing that we want to do here because of how much community engagement went into this plan. We know that we heard from every segment of this community, uh, when reimagined policing was being developed and so we know that hasn't changed and we continue to use this when we are engaging in new things here at the police department. Next slide, please. So just a reminder, um, of what reimagined policing, the main thing that reimagined policing means for us at the Boulder Police Department is to look at doing things differently. Uh, we heard the community loud and clear and tw- after twenty-twenty that they expected us to do things differently. So as you see on the screen, we used to have a more outdated model where someone would call us for help, we would show up, we'd put a Band-Aid on the problem and then we'd leave. Um, what we're really working on and we've had great success already with reimagined policing is trying to figure out how to not go to the same location over and over and over again. Um, when we're looking at things like data, um, and we have a robust program here, uh, with Dr. Reinhardt of trying to figure out why we may go to certain locations a lot more than others, there are usually underlying factors that, um, may be a reason why we get more calls there, such as bad place management or absentee landlords, those sort of things that allow us to try to prevent crime before they happen and we really do look at it, um, as a form of police reform. If we can figure out, uh, why crime is happening at locations and disorder, if we can prevent it from happening, we may not need that interaction that could go bad between the police and an offender. Um, this is a holistic governance model and I'm very grateful to all of our partners that have helped us implement it and continue to work on this plan. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Uh-oh, there we go. Um, a couple of things here, I just wanna highlight some of the priorities of, uh, reimagined policing and kind of tell you, uh, where we are on some things. Um, and I think we might have gone one too far. If we could try to go back one. There we go. So, uh, reimagined policing, um, obviously we're working to get fully staffed, uh, and when we do that, we're going to look at ways of implementing some of the additional staffing that reimagined policing calls for. Uh, we're looking forward to that, uh, but also one of the big things in reimagined policing is training techniques that support de-escalation, doing things differently. And so, um, ongoing in that work is our racial equity work. In twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, uh, the majority of our staff, if not all, have completed bias and microaggression training. Uh, and currently, uh, in twenty-four, we are, uh, focused on the equity and role of government training. Um, each shift, each, uh, unit has been going through that training and that's an ongoing thing this year. Uh, we're continuing as well with our ICAT program and that's Integrating Communications Assessment and Tactics. ICAT is a de-escalation model and we use it in all that we do. Um, it really values the sanctity of human life and provides officers tools, um, in the tool belt to hopefully prevent us having to use deadly force. Uh, we next have ABLE, uh, this is a great program, we brought it here about a year and a half ago. ABLE stands for Active Bystandership for Law Enforcement, it's out of Georgetown University and ABLE provides training for our staff to be able to intervene before something gets into a situation uh, that's, that's harmful for a community member or the officer. So providing our staff tools of partner was in a legitimate use of force, but you wanna remove them from that situation when tensions are high and we've had, uh, really good success so far with ABLE. And then you're gonna hear Chief of Stack, Staff McNiven shortly discuss our Declaration of Respect Pilot Study, um, that we're engaged in right now. The, the last part of that is the evidence-based wellbeing for staff. Um, we're looking at ways to evaluate how our wellness programs are working. Um, one of the things we're doing there is re- revamping our personnel early intervention system or PEIS, um, to be able to, to better gauge, uh, a number of factors that might lead, uh, to an officer or staff member getting to a point where we need to sit them down, check in on them, make sure that they have resources if needed. Next slide, please. All right, so, uh, obviously a tenant of reimagined policing is transparency and accountability. There's a lot that goes into this topic, I'm gonna talk about a few. So we have external mechanisms of transparency, the biggest, uh, one of the biggest is the police oversight panel. Um, we are continuing to work with the panel, um, there's new panel members, as you know. Um, I'm happy to say that, uh, we've had several panel members come out recently for police ride-alongs. Four of the members have come out and I know at least two that have ride-along scheduled in the next few weeks. Uh, I have met twice as interim police chief with some of our staff with, uh, the oversight panel and had some very good discussions, robust discussions about, uh, the police department and different things like that. Uh, and then all of our oversight panel members about two weeks ago attended, uh, their first defensive tactics and use of force training, which, uh, should hopefully better inform, uh, their decision-making when they're reviewing, uh, complaint cases. Uh, just wanted to touch on a couple of things because sometimes it's not necessarily clear how we interact with the POP. Um, I wanted to give a couple of examples from twenty twenty-three. So overwhelmingly, the majority of cases that the police oversight panel reviews, which are all complaints against our staff, they, a high percentage of the time agree with, uh, the final decision of our chain of command when it comes to discipline or the findings of, of, uh, of sustained, not sustained, et cetera, for a complaint. Even when they agree, almost always they provide very beneficial feedback to us, uh, of things that they see from a community member's perspective that we can either do different or better or change. And so, um, some, a few, a couple of recommendations, just to give you a glimpse of how that works on some, uh, complaints from the oversight panel. Uh, for example, after a complaint in twenty twenty-three about how a high-risk traffic stop was conducted, the panel recommended that we review our training on how high-risk vehicle stops, uh, should be conducted. So we did and we held, all agency sworn members went through both classroom and hands-on, a refresher training on high-risk stops with input from our legal advisor. Another case in twenty twenty-three, the panel recommended that one of our officers offer a formal apology to a community member that was involved in a complaint that was sustained. This occurred. Another example from twenty-three was a case where the panel believed that an officer did not activate their body-worn camera when they should have done so. The feedback from the panel led to some changes in our policy on body-worn camera activation. Um, there's quite a few examples I could give, but we truly do appreciate the input and collaboration of the panel. Uh, the next, uh, external transparency, uh, entity we have is our independent police monitor. Um, we, uh, just so you know, the independent police monitor oversees all complaints, uh, investigations that are professional standards section, uh, engages in here in the police department, all allegations of misconduct and we have truly benefited from the new independent police monitors, uh, experience and knowledge and we, we appreciate her work. Internally, we have our professional standards section, who are the, the, uh, investigators, for lack of a better term, our traditional internal affairs unit and they actually conduct the internal investigations with oversight from the monitor. Uh, in, in the vein of transparency, we also recently, uh, uh, held, stood up a webpage where we put video or we, and we will be putting video of critical incidents or high-profile incidents. Um, and the first video we, we put on the website, uh, was from an officer involved shooting in twenty seventeen, where we provided some, a narration and a shorter clip of a lot of, uh, longer clips to give community members, uh, a, a more compact look at what happened there. We're gonna continue to do that and as far as I know, we're only one of two cities in Colorado that are doing that. Uh, the last one is systematic and timely community input. Uh, in a moment, uh, Dr. Reinhardt's going to talk about, uh, a new program that we implemented in December of twenty-three called Power Engage. We've been engaging with, we've been engaging with Power Engage, we've been utilizing Power Engage long enough now where we've got some statistics to show you on how that, uh, is working. Next slide, please. Uh, so really quick, uh, engagement is another big tenant of reimagined policing. We did a lot of engagement during the process, uh, but the commitment was we're gonna continue to do that. So I'm really happy and proud of a lot of the great community engagement that we've got going on. A couple of examples are Yoab, our Youth Opportunities Advisory Board. I know that many of you on council had the opportunity recently to have dinner with the youth from that program. It's been a great foray, foray into, uh, connections with our teenage, uh, youth, uh, which is sometimes difficult for us to have those connections. So not only do the youth, uh, seem to really enjoy it, our officers also truly enjoy the collaboration there. Uh, one thing that I began earlier this year, uh, was to form- One thing that I began earlier this year was to form, to start forming a faith community advisory team. It was a gap that we noticed. And so we've had three lunches now where we brought in faith leaders from multiple different denominations. And we're picking their brains and trying to get a path forward to have more of a formal advisory team here that can help the police department. And we can reach out to them and they can reach out to us for help when things happen in the community. Also there, I want to mention Hate Free Colorado. So I sit on the board of Hate Free Colorado where it's not a board position, but more of a a position where we meet every month. It's run by the Anti-Defamation League and it brings a lot of partners together, law enforcement, public entities, as well as a lot of other entities to talk about bias motivated crime and hate crime. And we talk about not only trends, but how we can do, reach out to the community. That's been beneficial for us as well. One of our big engagement points is Special Olympics. We did the polar plunge, as did some of you earlier this year. And soon we've got the torch run coming up as well as the plane pull. We'll go out to DIA with our team and pull a jet at DIA. If anyone's interested in joining our teams, please let me know. Special Olympics is just such a great entity and we really love the partnerships there. The last thing recently, we, about two months ago, we implemented a Boulder Police Department newsletter. We don't just spam it out to people. People sign up if they're interested and we provide updates, messages from the chief's office. It's just a great way to reach a lot of info out to the community. And then one thing that's on the horizon, we're working to bring back, it's not quite yet to fruition is what's typically called a citizens academy. We're calling it a community academy where people will be able to come in and learn more about the department. Next slide, please. This is the last slide you're going to hear from me for a little bit. I'll give you a break, turn it over to Alister after this. Just wanted to give you another snapshot. I know council, you see some of these great things, hosting events here at the PD like Trunk or Treat, National Night Out. Bike registration is huge and we'll actually talk about some successes here in bike theft in a minute. We've also got a great new partnership with the Center for African and African-American Studies at CU with Dr. Raylan Rabaka, who's committed to helping us on many different fronts and we're really enjoying learning a lot about the CAAS. The last thing I'll hit on really quick, if you see the lower right-hand corner, we're entering in a new project for autism awareness. I won't, I won't try to claim this as an original idea. We saw that another agency back east did this. And we're going to be developing these stickers where people with autism can come here to the PD and get a sticker. They can put it on their vehicle or on their home, maybe next to the front door. And then our officers will know that maybe there's someone there when they go out or do a traffic stop that they need to be aware of, to potentially bring additional resources or just handle something a little bit differently. That is it for now. I've talked very fast. I apologize for that, but I wanted to get all the information out. I'm going to turn it over now to Chief of Staff Alister McNiven, who's going to talk about our new Declaration of Respect project.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, everyone. So the Declaration of Respect project began when our department was approached by Dr. Stuart Lord of Delta Developmental here in Boulder. In his capacity as the founder of Floyd Rights, a nonprofit organization he created in the wake of the murder of George Floyd. And the concept Dr. Lord brought to us was the use of a statement by a police officer to an individual prior to taking that person into custody. And the statement was designed to address some core concerns. First, that the person should be treated with dignity and respect. And second, that any force used would be strictly necessary. And his proposal was that these principles were attached to the individual in a manner analogous to Miranda Rights, hence the title of his organization Floyd Rights. About eight months ago, Dr. Lord began working with a focus group of officers who volunteered to further develop the statement, which in its original form was quite long. And the focus group ended up proposing three different variations of the Declaration of Respect as options for consideration. And we presented these three versions of the statement to our City of Boulder community connectors for their review from the perspective of the historically underrepresented communities to which they belong. And the community connectors provided invaluable feedback which further refined the Declaration of Respect. Next slide, please. So this is the final version, form of the statement that we had for our, for our project. And I'll just read it. As an officer, I am committed to treating you with dignity and respect. I will work to keep you from harm and I will not use unnecessary force. So once we had this version of the statement which we settled on, we worked with a group of 14 officers who volunteered to participate in a pilot project to test its effectiveness. And we gave them the background on the project and they participated in training sessions to include scenario training in order to enhance their ability to determine at what point in a contact it might be appropriate to provide the Declaration of Respect. So these 14 officers just concluded the 12-week pilot project designed to study the impact of the statement. And it was implemented in a variety of calls such as traffic stops, trespassing and disturbance calls and an in-progress weapons call. And we're currently analyzing the data from the project and we'll use that analysis to determine our next steps. We hope to emphasize to the community the value we place on their safety and our commitment to the sanctity of life. And to that end, the Declaration of Respect was originally for situations where an officer might anticipate a use of force. But we're also promoting its use during contacts in which an individual might be upset or scared or angry. And the goal is to lower the temperature in the room for a better rap. So as you've already heard, we're engaging with our community in a variety of different ways. And on that note, I'd like to introduce Dr. Daniel Reinhardt, our chief data analyst, who will discuss the Power Engage survey system and the public safety data that he has to present.
So go ahead and go to the next slide. So Power Engage, so first, sorry. Good evening, City Council. My name is Dr. Reinhardt. Like Alister indicated, I'll talk a little bit about Power Engage and then a little bit about different kinds of public safety data. So Power Engage, like they've said, is a tool that the City Boulder adopted in December of 2023 to survey users of emergency services to see if they were satisfied with the quality of the services that they were receiving. So basically after individuals call the police, they receive a text message within about 24 hours asking them to rate and comment on their satisfaction with the 911 operator and with any police that responded during the incident. So in the first six months of using this tool, we've received about 700 responses, survey responses. These are the results of some of those. So two main questions that are asked, how satisfied are you with the quality of the services? And so about 81% of folks have said they were satisfied or very satisfied. About 8% have been neutral and about 13% have been dissatisfied. And the second part of this is asking to provide any feedback, especially for the officers with whom they interacted. So the feedback that we received from the 700 people is normally about one sentence and it normally included things about, you know, the officer of the department, the incident, the resolution, satisfaction or dissatisfaction, desire for change and really many other topics. So go ahead and go to the next slide. So anyone that's conducted surveys with open-ended questions knows that people tend to voice opinions and concerns about many different kinds of things and this has been like that. So on this slide, we have some examples of some sort of positive, some neutral and some negative feedback about either, you know, officers or the circumstances with responding officers. So some of the positive feedback has been things like, you know, the officer was polite and helpful. Some of the neutral feedback has been things like, you know, I only interacted with the 911 person. And some of the negative feedback we've received has been things like, you know, I wish I had more interaction with the officer and not just a call. So it's helpful to point out that BPD is working with the city attorney's office to redact any personally identifiable information. And then to add this information, like all of the responses and feedback we're receiving on the City of Boulder website. Next slide. Can you go to the, thank you, appreciate it. So now I'm going to discuss some public safety topics that have generated a lot of community inquiry. You know, and again, keeping in mind that BPD is coming back in a couple of weeks to have more information about all of these kinds of things and more. Next slide. So this slide presents some raw counts of traffic crashes since 2018. So one of the things to point out is that, you know, obviously there's been a sharp decrease in March of 2020. And then crashes have kind of increased steadily from March 2020 to today. The City of Boulder, it really isn't at its pre-COVID level of traffic crashes. And so the 12-month monthly average is still about 19% lower than the monthly averages in 2018 and 2019. And for context, you know, the monthly average is like around 230 crashes per month. And this includes crashes that officers respond to and ones that residents report and there's no officer present. Now, I know there were questions about the Excel power outage, the three-day outage in April. So we took a look and there didn't seem to be a substantial difference in crashes during this three-day period. And we really wanted to thank the community for being vigilant as we all kind of went through that period. Now, it's also important to point out, given Vision Zero traffic injuries and fatalities. So in 2023, the last calendar year, there were about four fatal crashes. From 2018 to 2023, and this is for context, really between 99.8 and 99.9% of traffic crashes are non-fatal. And so last year, there was, there was really about one fatal crash for every 680 other kinds of non-fatal crashes. Next slide, please. So this is a chart of DUI reports over the last six years. While we've had fewer DUI reports in the past few years, as a department, we're actively looking at ways of getting drunk drivers safely off the road. This is vital, first because Chief Redfern is committed to traffic safety, but really, I mean, as a city, we're committed Division Zero, Division Zero initiative to have zero fatal crashes. So as a department, this past year, we secured a State of Colorado DUI grant that helps pay for officer overtime shifts to identify drunk drivers. And we're also partnering with businesses to ensure patrons aren't being over-served alcohol and that patrons are aware of options to not drive home drunk. Next slide. So this is bicycle theft, bicycle theft information for the last six years. So 2023 had about a 24% decrease in bike thefts compared to 2022. And we believe that some of this decrease, we can attribute to the substantial community engagement that BPD has had widespread use of technology to raise awareness about stolen bikes and prevention methods. And then really just the community investment in reducing opportunities for this kind of crime. So as an example, last month, BPD attended a bike theft awareness expo where officers and other public safety-minded people discussed crime prevention tips. Next slide. So this slide, it indicates the number of reports that BPD has had with bias-motivated circumstances. So bias-motivated circumstances, it's really when a crime is believed to have occurred and there's probable cause to establish that the circumstance was caused because of a bias against a federally protected class. There's a couple of things that are helpful to point out about this. So one is that bias-motivated crimes are under-reported to law enforcement. We know that there's more happening in the community. And the second thing is that law enforcement agencies across the country all report this to the federal government. So anyone can view this information either through the Colorado Bureau of Investigation Statistics website or the FBI's Crime Data Explorer. So in 2023, you know, we had more bias-motivated circumstances than in previous years. And reports in 2023 documented eight distinct kinds of biases. So BPD, you know, obviously we're aware of local, national and international reasons that we'd see changes in the number of these reports. And this is really why we think our community liaisons are so important to ensure that community groups, one, feel safe reporting these kinds of issues. And two, so that we can more easily communicate safety threats as we become aware of them. Next slide. So here, we're presenting just four kinds of crime categories over the last six calendar years. So during this time, we've seen increases in aggravated assault in the City of Boulder. So aggravated assault, it's a serious kind of assault, those that include weapons or injuries. And this is an example of a kind of crime that we haven't seen a huge change, given the COVID-19 pandemic. And you look at that and you compare it to like motor vehicle theft and burglary, where you see there were sharp increases from 2019 to 2020. And we've really had some success in reducing these crimes from 2020 and 2021 to now. One of the things that's helpful to point out is that these data don't reflect regional, state or national information. And the last category that I wanted to talk about is identity theft. So identity theft surged in 2020 and 2021, largely from fraud associated with the COVID-19 economic income payments and changes and how scammers will target members of our community. And so it's really helpful for us to point out that there's currently a scam involving someone calling and saying that they work with the police. And so as the police department in the City of Boulder, like we need to make it really clear that there is no legitimate reason that a member in law enforcement will call you and tell you that you need to send them money. If someone contacts you and it sounds suspicious, please contact the Boulder Police Department non-emergency phone line and we'll help you get to the bottom of it. So now I'd like to turn this back over to Chief Redfern to discuss significant incidents and please go to the next slide.
Thank you. Three more slides. We're almost there. I appreciate it. Daniel, thanks. So we're going to talk more in June, but there's three cases I want to talk about real briefly because of high community interest. And actually, the first one, I just really want to share with you because it's a, it's kind of a big, big case for us. So next slide, please. So this case, we've not spoken publicly about and it's ongoing, so I can't get into a ton of detail. However, this case is incredible. Two of our officers were down on Pearl Street. They observed what turned out to be a drug transaction and they arrested a guy that was selling drugs to people downtown. As we like to do, they talked to this person and this person gave us some information. They contacted the Boulder County Drug Task Force, which we're a part of, and an investigation commenced. Overall, this investigation spanned outside of Boulder into Denver and other places, but we know now that we have cut off a large drug pipeline coming into Boulder. In this case, if you look at the numbers at the bottom, that is a significant amount of drugs that receives 23 pounds of methamphetamine, six pounds of fentanyl, three pounds of heroin and other substances, multiple stolen guns and cash. Just a number on that, the estimated street value of that seizure is about $153,000. And the estimate is seven out of 10 counterfeit fentanyl pills contain a lethal dose. Our estimate is we potentially removed 53,000 potentially lethal doses of fentanyl from the streets. It's a great, great case, ongoing still. If we make more progress, I'll update you next month. Next slide, please. So this case from early May, I want to share an update on because we received a lot of community inquiry and I appreciate the council members and others that reached out to check on our officer after he was stabbed. This unfortunate case at Lucky's Market started as a trespassing. The person ended up attempting to stab our officer in the neck. He was able to deflect the knife, as you see in her hand there, and was stabbed in the shoulder. Thankfully, I'm happy to report he has recovered and we're actually working to bring him back to work right now. That person was not compliant and we spent about 45 minutes negotiating with her in the store. We were able to use less lethal means to take her into custody, thankfully. She was charged with multiple crimes, the highest of which was first degree assault against a peace officer. Next slide, please. And just a quick update because of the significance of this case and how brazen and violent this case was. We had a takeover-style violent robbery at a jewelry store on Pearl Street in February. This case, we quickly learned through talking to other agencies, involved a group of suspects who had done similar things all over the metro area. And we learned that there were some task forces and other agencies that were trying to build a large case on this group. We had one case in Boulder and that was one too many. We knew this crew was casing other establishments in the city. And so we decided that we were not going to wait for a bigger case. Our detectives identified suspects, put arrest warrants together and we were the, we were the agency that moved on and arrested several members of this crew. We were not going to allow them to come back to Boulder and victimize another hard-working business. So after our case, it appears the suspects have stopped their antics and that case is ongoing. Next slide. So I know that's a ton of information. There's obviously going to be questions, but two things on this slide. I mentioned our newsletter. There's a QR code and a website if you're interested. Also, our Boulder Crime Dashboard. So just a reminder, the QR on the right is to our public-facing dashboards. You can go on there and find specific crime data for your neighborhood, particular types of crimes, anything there of interest to you. Encourage the use of that as well. So that is all I have. there that, of interest to you, uh, encourage the use of that as well. So that is all I have, um, and I think we're ready to take questions.
Thank you, Interim Chief Redfern, Chief of Staff McGivern, and Dr. Reinhardt. Just a time check, um, we have 75 minutes allocated for this next portion. We're maybe about 10 or 15 minutes behind. So in any case, I'll try to get us to be done by 7:50 or better, if that's okay with folks. Um, and then I think as far as our procedure from here, we just have questions. So, um, I, we could just sort of do whatever sequence people like. Raise your hand in order and I'll call on you and, um, that's our agenda for this module. Just look at. Okay, Councilmember Weiner.
Um, Police Chief Redfern, can you give us an update on some of the, uh, upticks in crime in North Boulder? Or do you want to wait until your next, um, presentation?
You know, I had a feeling that might come up. I, uh, I, I, I can talk generally about it. Um, I know you've received emails, council. Uh, we have looked at this, uh, pretty heavily. We're still looking at it. Um, uh, we also found that there is an uptick in crime in North Boulder. We don't know all the reasons for that. Um, we're looking at some of that. And we know we've had some issues with encampments around Broadway and Rosewood. Um, we are up there a lot. We're meeting with the community. We're engaging in different, uh, uh, groups there. Uh, through our stratified policing model, um, we look heavily on data to determine where we're focusing our resources. Um, I met with the North Boulder Alliance yesterday, um, heard their concerns, and we are looking at uh, whether the data, uh, indicates that we should move, uh, one of our problem areas, which is University Hill to North Boulder. We're not there yet. Uh, we're still evaluating that, uh, to figure out if that's something we need to do. We can't just cut and run, uh, in, in one area. We have to be thoughtful about it. Um, we're, to answer your question, we are aware, we're still looking at it. Um, but we're also looking at deployment. And one of the things we have to do all the time is figuring out where do we deploy our resources? How many officers do we assign on a particular shift to a particular area? So all of those things are in progress, um, and I should have more information for you next month.
And by the way, I wanted to thank you for the great work in bike reduction, bike theft reduction. That's great.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Markless.
Yeah, thank you for this presentation. It was really helpful. Um, I have, uh, my first and only question is, and this is a broader question, when we're understaffed, um, so significantly each year, how does the budgeting carry over? Can it be used by other departments or are we carrying it over within the police department, um, line item?
Boy, I don't want to, I don't want to mess that question up. Um.
It cannot be used by other departments.
Thank you.
So does it go, okay, yeah, thanks.
So it remains within the police department every year, um, because precisely, we don't know if the police department is able to recruit, or in some cases, actually, the department has been able to recruit laterally, and so that can happen throughout the year. Um, but that budget remains, um, within the police department. At the end of every year, we try, we reconcile as that moves forward. Um, but we hope that that budgeted amount, uh, remains, uh, because that is the approved amount of force. If the police chief were to say, for example, we actually have looked at staffing and we want to reduce staffing, then we would have a different conversation. I can't imagine that the police chief is in that space with reimagining, actually, the new staffing component would actually expand staffing, and we have not approved that yet because they need to reach their staffing component.
But so upon the reconciliation, then, so for instance, this year, if you were short 20 people, you, we might find that we're up 2 million, even though we're going to budget for the same amount next year. Is that correct? Then, then it goes back into the.
That is when our finance staff then thinks about that reconciliation with fund balance.
Thank you.
Ryan, you're muted.
Excuse me. Okay, Councilmember Benjamin, and then we'll have Mayor Brackett and then Councilmember Folgers.
Awesome. Uh, appreciate the run. Uh, my, my question centers around, um, an, a crazy spike on the DUI charges. I, I think when you mentioned that, I did see it, but that was alarming. Was there a DUI checkpoint or, or something that was done intentionally that, that just cast a net and, and grabbed a bunch of folks or was something else going on there? I'm just sort of curious since that was quite a, an anomalous little spike that jumped in there earlier this year.
A great question, and, and I actually look at it a li- little differently, Councilmember. I, I look at that as a positive thing because those are mostly proactive stops that you're seeing on there. Um, we're hoping they go back up to where they were a couple of months ago. So part of it is our grant, uh, we received that overtime grant from the state to specifically go out and, and find drunk drivers. Uh, but also, it's interesting, and we did a little story on it. We've got some, uh, newer officers on our Watch 3, the overnight shift, that just, that's their thing. They just like going out and, uh, finding drunk drivers. And so we've got two or three, uh, very motivated young officers that, um, every night, it seems, are going out and finding, uh, drunk drivers. And so, um, I've made it clear it's priority. Uh, we've, you know, we've had some significant, uh, issues over the years. And so it's, uh, it's something we're going to continue to focus on. Uh, of note, if, as we were able to get fully staffed, uh, we don't currently have a full-time DUI team, and it's something we've always had in the past. I really want to bring that back as we add more staffing, um, but that's the, where that's their only, only job.
Just in a follow-up, does, is, how, how do you use perhaps an increase in, uh, uh DUIs in an deterrent manner? In terms of communicating that to the public to sort of get, get, get people a whiff of like, hey, you drive drunk, you're going to get caught. Like, you may not, may have thought you could get by, but, but we're out there and, and you're going to get caught. So either get a designated driver, don't drink, ride a bike. It can, can, how do we spin that into that deterrent aspect?
Well, riding a bicycle drunk is still illegal, so I'll just throw that out there.
Fair.
Um, the second, there's two things there. One is, um, our, our public information officer has been going out actually riding with officers and doing like ride-alongs with the DUI units, highlighting that. Um, sh- sharing different campaigns like through Mothers Against Drunk Driving. And secondly, what we find and what we hear is that when, let's say, one, uh, uh, for example, a, a younger, uh, maybe college student gets arrested for DUI, that word travels very quickly among their peers. And so we find that that has a, a huge effect in and of itself of, I mean, you, you know how it is. You hear so-and-so got arrested for DUI and, and we're hoping that that's enough to go, man, okay, uh, I'm not going to make that same mistake.
Okay, Mayor Brackett.
Yeah, Chief, thanks so much for being with us here tonight and, uh, presenting all of that, um, very interesting information. The, the breadth of activities the department is engaged with is, uh, quite impressive. And, uh, look forward to seeing some of those, uh, come to fruition, like the certification. That's, uh, some great initiatives going on. I want to ask a couple of quicks, uh, questions about some of the specific ones. Um, I was excited to see the, the standing up of the, the new, uh, bike, e-bike teams, uh, downtown. Could you just tell us just a little bit more about, um, how those are working and like where officers are going on those and how that's combining with other police efforts in the city?
Sure. Thank you for the question, Mayor. Um, so, uh, right now, uh, we have a lot of officers that are bike-certified, but the e-bikes have a little bit different nuance. And so, um, we are, uh, uh, right now, our officers that are on the e-bikes are assigned to our Pearl Street Mall team. Um, it's really, uh, you know, you, the way the one-way streets are downtown and all of those things, sometimes it's much quicker to get to a location on a bike when there's heavy traffic. Um, and police bikes are accepted from the bikes-on-the-bricks rule. Um, we can get somewhere quicker. They've been able to roll right up on people using narcotics. The bikes have just been a great tool. And so we're looking to purchase more. Our commander of that team is actually looking right now, uh, at adding e-bikes. Um, we are actually using them out on the, the, the bike paths and trails as well. Um, sometimes by the time we park a police car, get out on foot and, and go to walk, a problem has resolved itself. And so, um, it's really increasing our response times. Uh, within the next week, uh, our PIOs can be putting out a video. Our officers, uh, got in what I would call a foot pursuit the other day. They tried to stop a domestic violence suspect. He ran. They used the bikes to apprehend him. It's, it's a great video. It's a great use of that, that tool. Um, and so mostly, you're going to see them downtown, but, um, who knows down, down the road where we might be able to deploy more.
That's great to hear. Thanks for that. And my other one was, uh, I was right at the end of the slides about the, um, autism awareness. And, um, I was happy to see that because there have been some well-publicized events across the country where officers, officers have perceived a lack of cooperation, where in fact, it's been that the person is autistic. So, do, could you maybe talk a little bit about how your staff has been being trained that if they see that sticker, how they might interact with that individual differently?
Sure. So that's part of this, and that's why we haven't rolled it out yet. We, we're not just going to, you know, throw the stickers out there without making sure our, our folks understand that. Uh, last month, um, every single member of our agency went through a mandatory training on, uh, persons with autism. Uh, through, I can't remember the entity that put it out, but it was, it was a video everyone had to watch and take a quiz at the end. And it talks about the issues that you just mentioned. Um, Chief of Staff McNiven, uh, may want to add more to this, but he's also been, uh, uh, being kind of a liaison with the Center for Persons with Disabilities, um, working through other issues there as well. He just attended a listening session over the weekend about other issues other than autism. Um, just to ensure that we are, I'm not ending up in one of those scenarios where we do mistake, uh, s- somebody with a disability for someone that's just being non-compliant or other issues. So, Alistair, if you have something more to add, feel free.
So I think you captured, uh, the intent of, we're working with the center and, uh, uh, and people within the community to get their perspective on, uh, how we might best, uh, use these kinds of tools, like the stickers. Uh, another, uh, plan that we have, uh, in the works is, uh, something that came from some states back east, Massachusetts and Connecticut. There are some small, uh, smaller agencies, so cities that came up with what I think is, uh, a, an interesting idea, and that is a, it's called the Blue Envelope Program. And, uh, on a traffic stop, when an officer approaches a driver, if the driver presents the, uh, the officer with a blue envelope, it, it will have on it, uh, a, a, an acknowledgement to the officer that there may be someone within the vehicle, uh, a person with autism. And, uh, and, and we'll include things like a, a contact number for, uh, a family member if, if things, uh, might be better resolved by bringing someone else into it. It's a, it's really, uh, I think, very creative way of addressing a very real concern, which you've touched on. Uh, uh, where an officer does not, may not recognize, uh, that they are dealing with someone who, who perhaps isn't responding as, as another driver might. So that's, that's part of it. So we're, this last Saturday was the, our first meeting. We're hoping to have ongoing, uh, sessions to get input from the community on how we might best, uh, serve them with, with these kinds of, uh, strategies and tools.
That's great to hear. Thanks, Alistair. I appreciate you all involving, you know, people with lived experience in the community in, in rolling out that program and making decisions about it. That's really important. Uh, hopefully, you'll, uh, keep us posted as that moves into implementation phase. I'd love to learn more. That's all I have. Thanks.
Will do.
Appreciate it.
Councilmember Folkers, and then after that, Councilmember Adams.
Thank you. Um, so my first question, this wasn't in the presentation, but sort of something that was brought up recently. Um, several years ago, we approved, um, the Joint Terrorism Task Force with, uh, between the FBI and the police department. And I, um, and right now, I understand that there aren't any officers serving in that position related to capacity issues. Um, but because we have been promised, um, sort of annual updates when we have officers serving in that program, can council be alerted when that staff position is filled?
Absolutely. We would not fill that position without looping back in, um, with you all. And, and I'll just tell you right now, capacity-wise, I don't see that happening, um, in the immediate future, but if that changes, we will definitely let you know based on the history of that issue.
Thank you. Um, and then, you know, I, I really appreciate a lot of this engagement. Um, I think, you know, something that I've heard over and over again in terms, from the community, is a call for transparency, particularly around data. And so I was wondering, um, what our plan is for releasing data on a regular schedule related to, like, stop data related to race and ethnicity um, and our use of force data.
Hey, great questions. Um, and a lot of that, we're still working through because of mandatory reporting that we're dealing with the state. Some of those are new, um, things. I'll let Dan, uh, Dr. Reinhardt speak to the specifics of it, but many of those things are works in progress. And, uh, Chief of Staff, feel free to jump in if you have, uh, some context.
Yeah. So thank you, Councilmember. Um, that's a great question, and that's something that we're looking at working through, um, through the rest of 2024. One of the issues, issues heard, um, this is just kind of an example for your awareness, is that, uh, when the state of Colorado started a mandatory stop data program, the way that they define use of force is less restrictive than how we define them. So we would report more use of force than the state of.
I'm sorry, Daniel, you may need to turn your video off because you're coming in and out.
Sorry about that. It looks like my Zoom crashed. Um, but to answer your question, um, this is something that we're working through in 2024.
So we would anticipate that at the end of 2024, we would be seeing regular releases of that data, like, on a, every six-month kind of schedule, or when would we anticipate potentially seeing that and what kind of release schedule are we planning?
I, let me, I'll, I'll jump in there, Daniel. Um, Councilmember, uh, we, we are committed to this and we, we want to make sure we get it. And so I don't, I'm hesitant to give you an exact date, but I, 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 I tell you, uh, with all certainty that it is something that's on the top list of our priorities. We'll keep you updated. Uh, we may even have more information next month. Um, but it is, it is one of the top, uh, prod, projects. There's just a lot that goes into it. Um, last year, we moved to a new records management system, and that's also part of, um, some of the data that we're making sure is correct. The last thing I want to do is put out flaw data, um, as well. So I don't want to give you a date, but, um, soon. I, I hate not being more specific, but it, it will happen soon. I think you're still muted, Councilmember.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate your interest in making that happen. And, you know, similarly to the, um, some of the video footage, I would really encourage us to not make perfection, you know. It's, to some extent, um, my preference would be to move forward more quickly and know that we will need to update these systems, um, over time because no matter what we do the first go-around, it's not going to be, you know, things change.
Completely hear you.
Um, next I have a couple of questions about the care program. I'm really excited that that is now up and running, right?
It is.
Yes. Um, do we have any idea of how many, um, calls they're answering per month?
I don't. Um, and it, because it's not a PD thing, I don't know if I'm the right person or even, uh, any of our staff to answer that. Our biggest interaction with them is through our 911 system. Um, but I, I don't have that data, so that would probably, an area probably through HHS would be a better route.
Uh, yeah, I'm happy to provide a little bit more information, but I will say, and, and it is true that the touch point with PD is precisely dispatch, but I happen to have a quick little update because I met with the team recently and I know that there was a soft launch at the end of last year. Um, as you know, clinicians are hard to recruit and, uh, find. Uh, they've been, um, busy doing some training. Uh, this is a joint effort mostly with HHS staff and our fire department. Um, they've been certainly working with the clinicians, uh, that are embedded in our CERT team. Uh, the nice thing is that, uh, they have recently been working with your team, Steve, uh, dispatch team, to expand the type of calls that those clinicians are able to, or will be able to report to. And so they're continuing to work. Their hope is to continue to, um, gather information um, and get, uh, as they're doing monitoring and evaluation and expanding those types of calls, but their hope is to come to council uh, at some point, I think by the end of the year, uh, to come give an update. So more on that, uh, at, at some point during the year, uh, Councilmember.
Thank you. Um, and then I was wondering about the police oversight panel and in some years previously, we've had like a report kind of at the end of the year. Are we anticipating that this year?
I may have to take that for you as well, Steve. Um, that, uh, that report comes out of our independent police monitor, who actually, uh, happens to be right now, uh, with, uh, some panel members. Um, I know that they will be doing that again, and in fact, had spoken to our, um, independent police monitor. And not only, um, would I anticipate a report, but I have asked her to think about, and we will find some time, to would I anticipate a report, but I have asked her to think about, and we will find some time to come before council. I think that would be really terrific. I myself, in perhaps a former city, without naming names, am used to having our independent police monitor not just come forward themselves, but with the co-chairs or chair at that point of the panel. And so we want to think about that as we move forward and we'll be working with Sheri to think about what the right timing for that is as that moves forward.
That sounds great. I would love that. And then finally, related to traffic, safety and number of crashes, do we have any sense of how those numbers compare to the number of people using our roads? Like, we can tell that the numbers are down since COVID, but is that because people are driving safer or is it just people are driving less?
I, I could only speculate, so I'll see if our data guy has more detail for you, Daniel.
Yeah. So I'll say the, the Transportation Department uses a number of programs that allow for estimates of incoming and outgoing traffic volume in Boulder. But that's not something that the Police Department has access to. Though we, we do work closely with transportation to, to understand some of that. So that's something that we could get better information about and come back to council with.
And I assume when you say that the Police Department doesn't have access to that information, that it's just not in your system. If you were to request that information, the Transportation Department would of course share it, right?
Yes. Yeah, you, you interpreted that correctly.
I have no doubt that they would.
Just making sure. Okay. Yeah. I mean, I would be interested in understanding a little bit more how that data, you know, to me, it would provide a little bit more meaning to that. So, thank you. And that's it for my question.
Councilmember Adams.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Thank you for a great, very comprehensive presentation. I too was really excited to hear about the CAREs as well as the, the work you're doing with Stuart Lord and the Floyd Project, the youth delegates there. They talked about that opportunity when we had a chance to have, have dinner with them last month. And of, of course, just, you know, again, working with the team and representatives of our community connectors. So again, just a lot to, to be to feel like we're moving in the, in the right direction there. I would also just lift up the request for, you know, at the council retreat, we talked about the importance of having lived and learned experience when we're having these types of study sessions. And we talked about it, the homeless solutions section as well. And it was really powerful even there to have, you know, representatives from some of our core partners, though we didn't have that lived experience. We did have some of those key partners. And so as we think about how we want to have this policing section or public safety session in the future, you know, this really felt more like an update of the Boulder Police Department and that, you know, is, is very much appreciated. And to me, you know, our public safety is kind of like a three stool. One is the Boulder Police Department, two, the Independent Monitor, and three, the Boulder Police Oversight Panel. And so, you know, moving forward, it is a little awkward, right, to hear from, you know, the police about the Boulder Police Panel or about, you know, the Independent Monitor. I think it's more appropriate to have them speak for themselves. So I look forward to having that representation as we consider how we want to coordinate this in the future and really appreciate the flexibility and willingness to have an opportunity for Sheri, our Independent Monitor and perhaps our Chair Victor King to be able to join us sooner than waiting for another year. So again, just recognizing the ebbs and flows as we have a new council and, and really are, are working to continue to strengthen the, the work of, of previous councils and, and the staff. I also, you know, I really appreciated having updates about each of the different sections related to the reimagining policing plan. I think one thing that, another recommendation I would have is as I was looking, I basically had to toggle between the presentation and the plan because there were sections that were, there was information that did toggle over, but then there were sections that weren't addressed in this update. And so my preference would be to take the actual goals that have been identified and the actions that have been identified in the plan and give us updates on those actions. And certainly those areas where there's pain points where the council can perhaps be able to assist in removing some of those bureaucratic barriers or fiscal barriers, et cetera. So I think that that would be something. And then just in general with the reimagining policing plan, I think one of the critical pieces that are missing from this plan is a timeline. And so it's really, again, you've got some really great goals and really great actions, but there's not a timeline. So it's really hard to hold accountable when we don't really know what a timeline is. And I think a perfect example of that is, you know, the data transparency question, right? You know, that's a part of this plan is you know, the, you know, to augment the current dashboard with information about actions officers initiate on their own and maximize the use of access to data by the public interest. And so again, you know, I know there's been some efforts made in that area, but it would be really helpful to know, you know, what is the barrier to getting that information since this plan has been operational since last year. And I would imagine data transparency to be one of the more prioritized issues that came up, at least in, you know, I, I had the opportunity to provide feedback as a member, an inaugural member of the Boulder Police Oversight Panel to this, to reimagine. We actually only had one opportunity to provide feedback. So again, when we talk about engagement, I think it's also important that we talk about the levels of engagement and really make sure that we've got sufficient amount of time for the different stakeholder groups that are there. But again, really grateful for the information that was provided, but I'm hopeful in the next update that we actually get an update for the sections that weren't addressed in this update. As far as specific questions around this plan, when I was looking at the holistic governance, and again, you know, I love the system. So I noticed that, that that slide, there's kind of like a little figure and it has all, it's like an infographic and it has all of the different constituent groups that are a part of it. It, it kind of has police, but it doesn't explicitly mention, again, the Independent Monitor and the Boulder Police Oversight Panel. Again, I think it's really important that we lift out and delineate that. Otherwise, it just looks like, you know, those entities don't exist. And you know, I think our community was really smart and intentional about making sure that we had a, a very dynamic accountability system in, in response, right, to some of the, the tragic incidences that we had in our own community. You know, Zade Atkins and Sammy and others are just a few examples. That actually leads to one of my more specific questions, which is the community liaisons. I was curious, it was fantastic, obviously, to ensure that our, both our Jewish and Muslim communities as well as our LGBTQAI+ understanding intersectionality as well within that. I was curious why or what the status of having a Latino or Latina Hispanic liaison considering their population is, is larger than some of the other groups. And I would imagine, again, I haven't looked at the Bureau's biased data, but again, from the anecdotes that I hear from those communities, it seems like hate crimes and things are also impacting and biases are also impacting them. So I guess my first question is around that. If, if there is an expectation that, that will, will be considered in the future or, yeah, what the status of that is. So that's my first question.
First of all, thank you for the, also part of that too is finding the right staff members for those positions. So for example, we used to have a detective, he's now Detective Roel Montana Banda that was assigned to San Juan. He was promoted to detective and so we lost that direct connection. So we're, we want to make sure we're the right people in the right places. And that's also part of this is we, we, we have to be very intentional about if we put someone in a position as a liaison and it's not the right fit, it could be very bad. And so some of those we are relying upon other people such as neighborhood services, services and community outreach that already have connections in those communities that are bridging some gaps for us now to do some engagement going forward. And happy to let council know when we're doing those things as well.
Awesome. Thank you very much. The next piece I had was around just the community feedback. This is also a data section. And so, you know, just the need to disaggregate. So even with the community feedback, like I need to know what are the race, ethnicity, gender of these people that are providing this feedback? Because again, there could be some trends that we would need to see, but it's not possible to see when, when it's not disaggregated. And just in general, to my earlier comment, I think sooner rather than later. And, you know, we don't have to have everything all at once either. It could kind of just be, you know, phases of data, I think is another way that we can approach it so that it doesn't feel like it's, it's such a heavy lift. And I, again, I, I really appreciate the commitment to the, to making sure our data is valid and reliable before we post anything. So again, definitely understand, but a year is long enough to wait. And I think that we should be able to have some kind of disaggregated data available in a meaningful way. On that same note, is the fiscal data. I see Daniel's hand raised, so feel free to jump in if you had a response to the disaggregated data request.
Yeah, absolutely. So the Boulder Police Department is working closely with the Equity Officer. One of the, one of the barriers that we had in getting some of the demographic information of the people that are giving us feedback is that, you know, obviously like we, we, we can't and we shouldn't be in a position that we're forcing people to provide their information. And so those are kind of active discussions about, you know, do we, do we have those questions on the survey in a way that, that isn't intrusive and doesn't, you know, make people feel like we will value their impact, their, their input differently based on what they enter. And so those, those are active conversations that we are having.
Well, I encourage you as you're having those conversations to actually talk with people who have various identities. As somebody who is from a racial minority, I can say I always write down my information because I want people to know because I understand when it's not disaggregated, you're not seeing the full picture. But I totally understand and would respect optional. And, and that's, you know, but as far as the, the barriers to getting some of the crime data disaggregated, I think that's something where I'm, I'm not as clear as to what the barriers are to not have anything by this point. But again, thank you so much. And again, I know that this is not an easy effort, but it is absolutely urgent and important. I want to move on to the Boulder Police Oversight Panel. Thank you so much for, A, acknowledging its existence, B, talking about explicit examples of how policy recommendations have been considered and actually used. I would actually request, again, perhaps in the follow-up, for next time, I know the annual report for the Boulder Police Over pipe panel is coming up in the next couple of months, at, at the very least, and recognize that there were various considerations around that delay. But I am hopeful that that is inclusive of, you know, an update on the previous policy recommendations that the Boulder Police Oversight Panel has made, not just in the annual reports, but also, you know, case by case, there are oftentimes many areas that are outside of the authority of the Boulder Police Oversight Panel. And so what many panelists will do will create policy recommendations, recognizing that we may not have the authority, but these are things that we are seeing both from our extensive training provided by the Police Department as well as our lived experience, which, you know, was a, is, 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 is quite vast. So again, I'm just very much interested. Again, you know, it was great to hear about use of force, but I didn't hear anything about use of force with juveniles. Also, you know, there were some, some questions about, you know, working with people with disabilities, you know, just the coordination between social services and our Police Department. So again, I think I'm, I'm eager to hear those Boulder Police Oversight panelists work really hard. It's hours and hours of watching video cam, hours and hours of training. So those recommendations are, are taken really ser- I, I'm hopeful that they're taken seriously and would like to see more evidence of that. Question about e-scooters. I continue to hear from our, our disabled community and allies that, and I see it for myself. It's painful to go on C use campus and ride around and see all of their stuff in the container that they're supposed to be in and then leave campus and just see these e-scooters thrown about. You know, and, and when we talked to the e-scooter company, they said, well, you know, we've got a van that picks up stuff and that's great. But that also impacts somebody's ability to live independently when it's in the middle of a sidewalk or in the middle of a cut, curb cut, et cetera. And I just imagine if somebody left their car in the middle, if there, if somebody left their rental car in the middle of the street and walked away, would we allow that? And I don't think we would. I don't think we would stand for that after even one incident. I don't think that car rental company would rent the car to that person anymore. I don't think the police would let, right? I think there could be, you know, tickets on their driver's license. So again, as our technology advances more quickly than our accountability systems, I'm curious what efforts we can do to, to ensure that the e-scooter people are, are doing what they need to do to ensure one, not only the quick removal, but making sure that those repeat offenders are not, you know, allowed to continue to disrupt everybody's life. So, specific question about e-scooters.
And, you know, Councilmember, I appreciate it. And I've seen some of the same things that you're, you're referencing. I, I'm not sure, not to try to shore up responsibility, but I don't know if I'm the right person to answer that. I mean, obviously, we can enforce laws when they are outright recklessly and things like that. And we have done that. And obviously, we're trying to prevent crashes, but I'm not sure, you know.
But once again, you know, not to interrupt you, but if I left my rental car in the middle of the street, right, so, somebody would do something about it. And I'm just wondering
I, I will say
the responsibility is.
Yeah, I'll say Councilmember Adams, that the person who manages those contracts is our Transportation and Mobility Department. And I'll make sure we follow up with you on that particular question.
Okay, great. Appreciate that. All right, I'm almost at the end. In the Boulder Police, Reimagined Policing, what another thing I really appreciated about the plan is that they have that geographic focus. And also in your update, you also talked about the geographic point, focus. And to Councilmember Weiner's earlier question about North Boulder, you know, moving forward, I would love to see more geographic updates or community-based or neighborhood-based updates so that we can get a better handle. We know that there are some acute problems, I think, from that concentrated, what is it called? Concentrated map of something? Concentrated map of incidences or something like that. I think there were like about three or four. So I'm not imagining tons and tons, but it would not be nice to have like a, a deeper dive into, you know, what's happening in North Boulder or the Bandshell or, you know, Civic Park or, you know, just some of these more acute areas. So as you're thinking about data and data transparency and some of that disaggregation, perhaps we can prioritize some of those areas where we are seeing both increases and then sustained effort. So I got that.
That's, that's an easy ask, Councilmembers.
Yeah, yeah. And then, yeah, I mean, may all my ass be easy. And then with change over time. So again, this is just something in general that I'm, I'm gonna always ask for. You know, as we are, especially since we only get to have these deep dives kind of once or twice a year, having that change over time data is really, really helpful. So again, I know there were a lot of slides that had change over time, but again, I need those slides connected to the actual reimagining policing plan, right? Like, how are, you know, to me, all of those slides are evidences around the actions that you're taking. And I just, and I wouldn't like, I, I prefer not to have to crosswalk three documents to, to get that information. And, and I know that our community members would appreciate it as well. Again, this is a work in progress. I really appreciate your leadership in coming in as an interim. I have always appreciated the opportunities that we had to work together at the Boulder Police Oversight while serving. And same for you, Alistair, you were leading our, our use of force training and I still am just really, that was a powerful thing. And I will leave you all with this, which is in that training, you know, stage zero or level one or whatever, you know, people are talking nicely to the person and are you okay? I didn't even know that level existed. I've never seen it or witnessed it or experienced it myself. So to know that people are trained the way that we are supposed to act for anyone was uplifting, but it was also tragic to know that that's not my lived experience or the experience of many others in our community. So thank you both for your efforts and the rest of the department. I look forward to continued conversation around this and having you come back again. When we just double, doing double checks for all my little questions and everything. I feel good about it for now. I'm gonna co-sign Lauren's request about the video and access around data. So I'm gonna just add that into the data transparency question is the video piece. But again, thank you very much for the opportunity and look forward to being on the team with all of you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Mayor Protem, Dr. Spear.
Thank you. And thank you so much for the presentation and all this work, just to kind of put this all together for us. A couple of my questions have already been answered, so I just want to lift them up again. The idea about getting demographic information, and I understand it's challenging, appreciate you're trying to figure out how to do this. For me, especially in some of those satisfaction reports and things, I would really love to see that broken down because I think that's where we can really see, you know, is this training we're doing being effective perceived by our community members who are having interactions. And then also I have the same question that Lauren did about whether any of the traffic decreases have been related to just having less traffic and the old, the other data source I might And the other data source I might suggest there would be looking at office vacancy rates with either Community Vitality or the Chamber or somebody like that because I'm curious if that could be another way of showing if if that's part of what it is, is just fewer people on our roads. And then one other question that I had around, this is in the, it was a really big increase in bias motivated crimes. And I was trying to understand, is that sort of just reports of crimes or if those are crimes that have kind of been been looked at and and judged to actually be crimes? Can you explain that a little more?
I can, if Dan, I I asked Daniel to go to a different room because his computer was terrible. I don't know if he's back on, but I can share with you what he shared with me. Daniel, if you're here, please speak up. It looks looks lonely in there, Daniel, go ahead.
Yeah, Councilmember, can you please repeat part of your question? I was just being promoted.
Yeah, yep, absolutely. So the number either seemed really low, well, actually, yeah, it kind of seemed really low either way. But what I was just wondering is whether whether that seventeen bias motivated crimes for 2023, was that crimes that has sort of been investigated and, you know, people were being held accountable for those? Was that just what was reported and and it hadn't necessarily been investigated yet? What did that number represent?
Yeah, of course. So that number represented the number of reports, not necessarily the number of crimes indicated in reports. And so the way that most agencies report this kind of information, like to the state and federal government, is by bias motivations. And so seventeen reports, in one report, you can have multiple kinds of bias motivations against different groups. And they they can also include multiple crimes. And so I can tell you that those seventeen reports included circumstances that were ultimately found to not be criminal, but were documented because they need to be documented. But many of them were criminal.
Okay, thank you, that's that's helpful to know, and I appreciate that we're tracking that and sorry to see that number go up so high. But hopefully, some of it is also just the relationships you're building and people starting to feel more comfortable speaking up about it. And then I just had a couple of other questions about things that were, whether or not we're tracking them. So wage theft is something that I continue to hear about around folks in the community. So I'm curious if that's anything we're tracking. The other is threats from white supremacy and domestic terrorism, specifically from right-wing extremists and white Christian nationalists. That just continues to be something on my mind, given what we're seeing on a more national level and hearing about even our communities. So I'm wondering if we're tracking information and doing so in a way that can inform their prevalence in the community.
Daniel, I'll let you take the wage theft question real quick. If if that, I know that's a difficult one to track, but you probably have a better answer than I do.
Yeah, my answer generally to that question is that we do track that kind of information, but some of that is is easier, like that's something we could provide for the next council session in a couple of weeks because it'll take a little bit of time to parse out.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I would I would appreciate seeing some of that, too. I feel like that's something, too, that's going to benefit from some of the relationships that you all are building in the community and helping people understand how to how to report that. Thank you.
Indeed, and to your to your other point, so the way that we, so we obviously are very concerned with white supremacy, with people, you know, that may want to come to Boulder for whatever reason to to harm our community based on whatever ideology. Looking at this year, you know, obviously, election season, no matter which way things go, it's a concern. For us, it's more about looking at a specific incidence, and it's hard to say, you know, we have something that happens if someone doesn't tell us, hey, we believe this happened because of this, or we find that we we have a case where we make an arrest and we say, wait a second, this person is giving us indications that they're part of, you know, a white supremacist group or any any number of groups. It's more about kind of figuring out, you know, when we know that we've had something, why they're here, what their motivation is in Boulder. It's something that's always on our radar, it's not easy to track. One of the things, though, that we do is we network with our federal partners, we network with other agencies around Colorado. Through Hate Free Colorado, when we meet, I hear about, you know, this flyer got dropped in this city. We see it up here, and so part of it is just about relationships to get a heads up when we hear about potential things. And like anything else, there's sometimes it seems like there's new things popping up every day. So it's it's really about trying to stay on top of trends. And we do send, you know, detectives to different classes on how to identify these sorts of things. Unfortunately, though, sometimes we don't know about them until they happen. To to be very clear, the the very smart criminals aren't going to broadcast or indicate that they're going to come harm people. It's it's sometimes we're reactive, but a lot of times there's things we can do ahead of time. If nothing else, to just be aware of the existence of a particular entity in town or around town.
Yeah, thank you. And I think, too, it's right, it's it's not just kind of people coming into Boulder. So, for example, in my neighborhood, a few years ago, for about a year, there was a car that had a three percenters bumper sticker, right? Like, there is people in our community as well, and just kind of thinking about that, too, and and, you know, seeing folks just showing pictures of, you know, Patriot front signs that they've taken down and stuff like that. So, yeah, so I think it's it's not just outside, it is here, too, just potentially a little bit less less vocal than when it's somebody coming in for a march or something.
That's fair.
But, yeah, no, thank you for that, that's that's helpful. And then the other thing is, and this is just sort of a comment, and I think a food for thought type question. I attended the listening session at Center for People with Disabilities last weekend, and it was wonderful, really, really appreciated being there. Tara was there, too, was just really great to hear. And one thing, though, that I kind of heard there, and Alistair kind of talked to you already about this a little bit, but just want to raise it here, too. And I heard some of this language in the presentation tonight. And it's it's just, it's a little bit hard to hear sometimes when we're saying that it's the community's job to figure out how to act around us in a way that's going to keep them safe. And and I understand, you know, where that sort of comes from because people are trained to, you know, to look for threats. And I just want to name, that's also really hard to hear that because it feels like we're telling our community members, it is your job to stay safe from us. And and I don't know, you know, where the solution is in there, but I I was really heartened by just some of the discussion at the CPWD last weekend where people were really, you know, working on on thinking collaboratively about how we do this. And I often have the thought that when we are problem solving for the groups with the highest needs and the highest need for accommodations and things like that, we're actually doing things that are going to benefit everyone. It's not just that one group that benefits. And so I'm just wondering if in these conversations, we can start to think about maybe some different language we can use when we're talking about this or different ways that we can approach folks so that so that people in our community aren't feeling like it, the onus is on them to not be, you know, harmed or have an interaction go badly. So again, just a just a comment, but I appreciate, you know, that within that CPWD conversation, we were starting to think about that. And and I look forward to hearing more about how we are, how we're moving forward in that way.
And I I know it wasn't a question, but I will just respond to your comment. We we appreciate, I I appreciate that, and we're committed, you know, we don't have it all figured out, and we're, that's why we're willing to go, you know, anywhere we're asked to go and learn and and pick this up and and absolutely willing to to hear that feedback. So thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you all. I I do appreciate that you create an environment where I can say these things that I might not say to everybody. Thank you.
I I have I have one more comment just because it, to Councilmember Adams' earlier statement. I want to make sure we acknowledge that the the driving force behind setting up that that session last Saturday was our independent police monitor, Sherry Down. So I want to make sure that I acknowledge that she's the person that set that motion, and it was, it was wonderful.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, she did a really great job. It was a really wonderful event.
Okay, I will take a turn, and then I, though we've done mostly questions, there've been a few comments. So if there's any remaining thoughts that folks would like to share before we move on to the next item, we could try to do a quick round of that, about fifteen minutes left session. Okay, so for my comments, thank you again, Interim Chief Redfern and team. I have three things. Councilmember Folklord's really covered most of it, though, so I'm just gonna try to run through this and lift up the main points. The first one on eliminating deaths, serious injuries in our transportation system. Firstly, just wanted to acknowledge and thank Interim Chief Redfern for meeting with me last week. We spent about an hour talking about ways that we can continue with the journey that I know the the city has begun to do this well. And I say I know what we have begun because I would commend that you're using crash, you're being deliberate about using word crash and not jumping to accident. And that's a journey that started and that we have a lot to do, and specifically around aligning our departments towards a shared understanding about change model for the outcomes we need to get to, how to get there, way that we use data, and way that we understand crash investigation reporting can be used potentially to identify problem patterns. That have applications for the Transportation Mobility Department, that have application for the City Manager, and that have applications for for us, City Council. So just wanted to say thank you. And I look forward to continue discussion on that. I think with Councilmember Folklord's question, I haven't had any further at this point, but look forward to unpacking that more after we have some more dialogue. That that's that, that was just a comment, I suppose. And then the second topic on data, Councilmember Folklord said two things that I was going to say myself. So one, on race data around stops, very much forward to getting, making that transparent as soon as it's practicable. And then also on use of first data, looking forward to seeing that become live and placing some zero. So thanks for that. And my third topic is on care, also Folklord's talked about this. Maybe I'll just say my my questions, these are really data focused, so you know what they are and just so you have the question. So I'm I'm very interested specifically in what are the, what is the percentage in the number of nine-one-one calls diverted to care? That could, I don't know the best way to characterize that, if it's monthly or if it's if it's however you'd like to do it. But I I'd like to understand, I know that we're we're early in the in this journey, but I'd like to like understand that. Then relatedly, of that share, what percentage of care dispatch calls lead to backup calls? And I'm a, this is, and I also acknowledge that we're early in this this initiative. So I'll be hoping to find data on that, either it, I don't know if it will be available for the next time we meet.
Councilmember Schuhart, I'll make sure to pass that on to the care team because it's likely not going to be Interim Chief Redfern, but that team.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's all I have unless Interim Chief Redfern with with my questions slash comments, if you have any anything you want to respond to.
No, I just appreciate it. I also found our meeting beneficial, and and we're committed to to doing what we can in that realm as well. Thank you.
Thanks, okay. So last call, any any final thoughts from anyone? We'll move on, going once, going twice. Okay, that does it for this item. Thank you again, Interim Chief Redfern and team.
Thank you all, good night.
Okay, so with that, let's move to our next item. And I will give it to City Manager Nurya Vandermoide to introduce it.
Thank you so much, Councilmember, and it's striking to me that today seems to be a day that has different facets of public safety. Unbeknownst to you all, perhaps, we started the morning, a variety of folks, leaders in their own rights from all areas and around the organization were led in a tabletop exercise this morning by our Office of Disaster Management around a scenario involving wildfire recovery. And we just heard a little bit about BPD, and we're about to talk a little bit about our Community Wildfire Protection Plan. So it has been a bit of a public safety day in a variety of facets. So I'm gonna open it up, and I believe that our Assistant City Manager Pam Davis is gonna kick us off on today's journey.
And the journey it will be, thank you, Nurya. Hi, everyone, my name is Pam, oh, my light just turned off, perfect timing. My name is Pam Davis, I am one of Boulder's Assistant City Managers, and I use she/her pronouns. It's great to be with you, thank you for the time tonight. My job tonight is really to do an overview of the framework of our wildfire resiliency work and introduce the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. And then we have a fabulous group of subject matter experts to lead us through the discussion. So if you don't mind, Lisa and Alicia, please pull up the slide deck. Thank you. So I want to begin with grounding council and community in the context for our wildfire resiliency work as a whole. As we know, enjoying all that Boulder has to offer includes preparing for and becoming more resilient against the damage that can be caused by wildfires. City staff alongside community partners, community members, agency, regional partners, we're all working together in new ways to improve the safety of our community and the sustainability of the natural space around us. We all have a role to play in wildfire preparedness and resiliency. Boulder has long been proactive in addressing wildfire risks for community safety. We've implemented measures such as maintaining a year-round team of fire management professionals, transitioning the community away from highly flammable roofing materials, promoting fire resilient equal ecosystem management, and emphasizing disaster preparedness. The Marshall Fire was a stark reminder of the importance of community resiliency and preparedness in the face of fast-moving wildfires. Nearly a year after the Marshall Fire in November of 2022, Boulder voters voters approved a new Climate Action Plan Tax, which includes $1.5 million to support a more holistic and collaborative approach to address the city's ongoing climate and resilience efforts. Leveraging that tax, we have the opportunity to shape a new generation of ecological sustainability with fire and wildfire resilience. While we're taking on more work to help our community through wildfire risk reduction efforts that are prioritized in our protection plan, we will also continue to reiterate that wildfire risk reduction in Boulder is everyone's responsibility. Together, we can keep our communities safer and be better stewards of our natural lands. Next slide, please. So tonight's study session is going to focus on the citywide wildfire resiliency framework. Then we're going to focus most of our time on informing you all on what the Community Wildfire Protection Plan is, how the plan update process was completed, and preview preview the final draft recommendations. We also intend to present some ongoing work highlights and provide counsel the opportunity to ask questions and provide feedback on the draft plan. Next slide, please. The city's wildfire resiliency work brings together a cross-departmental team, including support from the nine departments you see here, as well as many others. It takes the entire city organization, along with agency partners and community members, to support this work. While the team was formerly chartered, formally formally chartered almost two years ago, we continue to evolve who and how we work together and continue to identify opportunities in new ways. Some of the departments you see on the slide were not part of the original team charter, but as we have begun to explore the interconnectedness of all of our wildfire resilience work, we continue to broaden the table as we move forward. As a reflection of that collaboration, we do have significant staff support with us here tonight. So when we open for questions and feedback at the end, we may be phoning several different friends along the way to help us out. Continuing to implement the recommendations in our CWPP, it supports a priority action within the safe goal of our Sustainability Equity and Resilience Framework and supports strategy number two of our Citywide Strategic Plan, which is to advance efforts to enhance regional disaster prevention, preparedness, and response that leverage existing partnerships and prioritize city investments. While the CWPP is just one piece of the wide range of resiliency efforts across our community, we're eager to leverage it to advance our important citywide goals. Next slide, please. What we're bringing to you tonight is the second edition of our Community Wildfire Protection Plan. The first was completed in 2007. This current iteration was funded by Boulder's Climate Tax passed by voters in November of 2022. The update will serve as an ongoing guiding document that will assist the city and community members in making informed decisions with respect to wildfire preparation and management. Wildfire protection plans exist in many jurisdictions across the country and at local, state, and federal levels. The plan we are presenting tonight aligns with standards of the Healthy Forest Restoration Act of 2003 and standards of the Colorado State Forest Service. This is a document that revolves around identifying and reducing risk. It's heavily scientific, but also integrates important community input. It's heavily scientific, but also integrates important community input to ensure our community values are considered. Having a CWPP is important for maintaining eligibility for several federal and state grant opportunities. And while the plan is specifically not a regulatory document, you will see key policy recommendations that will explore the adoption and enforcement of enhanced building codes. Part of that work will come to you in the form of the Wildland Urban Interface Building Code Updates next year, along with our work previously discussed in the last couple of months, supporting City Council's newly adopted priority to pursue wildfire hardening and water-wise landscape policies and recommendations. Those policies, along with future budget and resource decisions with council, will be your primary touchpoint as council with this important work. And finally, the plan recommends best management practices, but the prioritization, resourcing, and implementation is now the city's role. These recommendations will not inherently solve the risk of wildfire in our community, but it will create steps for the community to be better prepared. And so with that, I am pleased to turn over the presentation to our Division Chief Brian Oliver from Boulder Fire Rescue to share the plan with you.
Perfect. Uh thank you very much, Pam. That's a great frame up. Uh like Pam said, I'm, Ron Oliver, I'm the Wildland Division Chief for Boulder Fire Rescue and and real happy and and proud to to be able to present this plan to council. Getting into it, the the process really started um like Pam said, about two years ago, with the formulation of our wildfire resiliency team, that big cross-department um group. We sat down and really started diving through uh cross-department plans, our old documents, our current fire management work, and tried to inventory things that we were already doing. And in that dive, we realized that while the original Community Wildfire Protection Plan was a really old and really outdated. So uh one of the first steps of that group was to to dive back into that document and create an update. And so that's, that's where we ended up here. Looking at the the breadth of the the issue, the amount of of city-owned property across the county, not just in the municipal boundary, we we realized that needing a a larger, more encompassing effort was was gonna take some help. So we did go through an RFP process and and did uh procure a consultant to help us really kind of author the plan and make it a little prettier than we probably would do on our own. So um really, what what boils down to is we take all of the available science we have at our fingertips now and and utilize some of those consultants resources to create fire behavior modeling, um you know. And with that, we take that fire behavior modeling, lay it across the landscape, uh look at it from very varied angles to different subject matter experts, whether it's uh vegetation management, actual fire suppression expertise, um all of those things. And then we also create some field assessments and do some snapshots of the community through what we call eleven forty fours. It's an NFPA, basically a a quick curbside assessment to figure out how communities are dealing with or how they're going to receive wildfire, whether or not they're prepared. We take that and we start throwing it into a a larger plan, capturing some ongoing work, and we try to identify and prioritize some recommendations. We take our staff and we take some of those recommendations, some of those maps, and we'll get into those in a little while. Look at some maps in a minute. And we input, review, goes back and forth between us and the consultant to make sure that the science and the magic is 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 working right. And then we also invite external partner feedback. So part of our um wildfire core team that helped develop the plan included several other uh FPDs, Fire Protection Districts, excuse me, that have open space or or city property in their districts, partners like the Wild, United States Forest Service, the Colorado State Forest, et cetera, et cetera. Those are all folks that that we use as as partners in the process. And then we also wanted to integrate, as as so many other communities post-marshall dove into their CWPPs as well. Members of our group also were part of executive core teams for the county CWPPs efforts. They're they're about a month behind us. You'll see their uh document coming out here pretty soon. And Mountain View Fire Protection District, which as all of the uh fire protection districts in the county go, they have the most city property in their district uh as than anyone else. So it's very important with us to collaborate with them and make sure that that our plans were maybe not exactly the same, but at least congruent in using same risk model processes and and similar um environments.
Brian, I apologize for interrupting you. You may have to either get closer to the microphone or speak louder because you're a little muffled.
Okay, I apologize for that. That's a problem with this fancy computer I have. I will try to clean that up a little bit. And then, of course, we have community involvement. Next slide, please. So as the plan states, right, it is a community wildfire engagement plan. So um we used a multimodal uh process to try to utilize as many methods as we can to reach as many people as we can and get as broad an audience for that community engagement and community feedback that we could. Social media, open houses, virtual events, um websites, standard media, uh press releases. Again, in that engagement and that coordination with the other CWPP efforts, we made sure we were involved as city representatives at their community engagement meetings and they were at ours. So all of the plans really shared a lot of process so that it truly was trying to be more encompassing across the community. We shared a public survey, um over eleven hundred respondents to that survey. Two hundred and seventy of those folks uh answered that they lived within the city limits. And so that's where that two hundred and seventy number comes from. So um by way of comparison, um most of the other community uh wildfire protection plans that our consultant has completed, uh the numbers of their respondents were between twenty and thirty percent of that two seventy based on the community. So uh we have a really engaged community and that's a that's a really good thing. Next slide. So again, to describe the project area, uh again, our original CWPP effort was based solely around the municipal boundary. We really didn't expand very far out into um the rest of the county. But given our city-owned managed lands that that spread throughout the county and into Jefferson County and in that little blob at the bottom there, we knew that 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 property touched a lot of other communities and a lot of other neighbors. And so we wanted to be more uh, look at this more broadly and and encompass all that. And and for those of you not familiar, the the big blob over there on the left side, that's what we call our Source Water Protection Zone. Um and that that's the city-owned watershed uh above the metal limit for the Silver Lake Water uh Silver Lake Watershed area. So we had to include that as well, um as that city-owned managed land. Go to the next slide, please. So all of that data, all of those documents and plans that we have, all of the fire modeling and science that we used from the consultant through other uh you know, CSFS and USFS modeling profiles, we created a whole big pile of of risk maps for for decision-making. Some of those maps listed here, a risk to assets, rate of spread, flame length, those are all, you know, fire suppression uh models we use to make sure, you know, figure out what kind of resources we need to fight, what kind of fire. Probability of control, probability exceeding control, which again, same in that similar ilk of of can we or can we not fight the fire as it stands, given the fuel model and the the topography uh where the fire exists? So we place virtual fires all over the landscape and run these models and and make some determinations on the risk. And we we get a whole pile of maps and if you look through the draft plan, you can you can definitely cycle through a lot of these and and see how they look. And and some of the, some of them are a little more uh scary than others. There's a lot of red and orange in some of them and and not so much. This map you're looking at here is what's called the expected net value change, which to me is one of the more visually striking maps, uh just because it's 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 pretty easy to see the issue, right? So what this is saying is based on the burn probability of that fuel and that topography as it sits, the colors represent the negative change um to the value or resource. So not saying that green is great and it's not creating any negative change. It's just that is less negative because that's mostly vegetation, whereas you started getting into yellows and reds. Uh that's where we start reaching improvements, infrastructure, and all those other things. So that's, that's a negative impact if if fire were to involve those areas. And that feeds into the next map, so you can go to the next slide, please. So treatments uh and recommended treatments. This is, I think, another one of those really great uh striking maps. It shows a a really good picture. So all of those green blobs you see there are previous fuel treatments, either done by us in the city uh through various departments, partners, forest service, our neighboring fire protection districts, neighboring communities. So that's all work that's already been done uh as recently as of the last ten years. So that's that's quite a bit of fuel treatment. Fuel treatments are, can be anything from prescribed fire, mechanical thinning, so cutting down trees and removing vegetation, mowing, grazing, all of those things are considered fuels reduction treatments, um all very important and all tools in the box, so to speak. One one thing isn't gonna solve the problem. You need to use them all um congruently and and appropriately. The red treatments, or the red blobs, were treatments that we have already planned. So those are already in work plans, are already on the docket uh through either uh open space and mountain parks, or parks and rec, or or utilities, or or any of those other departments that that we were working on before we even started this process. And then, of course, purple, if you look at the purple, it really kind of dives in and touches on all those red and yellow spots uh on the previous map. And those are the recommended fuel treatments that that came out of the CWPP process. Again, those are those are just fuel treatment recommendations, but I I thought this map was a a really good way to show, you know, some of the work that's already been done and and where we can enhance and do better work. The next slide, please. So with all of that, again, don't want to dive into so many of the details in the science book and and keep this at a higher level, but you know, pulling out some of the key recommendations, not diving through the the, I think it's nine pages, at least when you print it out, of recommendations, because that would take way too long. We'll dive in. So everything's couched uh in the CWPP through the tenants of the National Cohesive Strategy for Wildland Fire. And those tenants are Safe and Effective Response, Resilient Landscapes, and Fire-Adapted Communities. So we we pulled a, pulled a recommendation out of each one of those those buckets, if you will, to really kind of highlight some of those high-level places where where we need to work. And the big one in Safe and Effective Response is to create a, the recommendation out of the plan is to create a tactical and operational fire response and suppression plan with a focus on wildfire escalation into urban conflagration. And that's, you know, I'm I'm delighted to say that that's right in line with the work we're already doing with our structural protection plan. And we are currently starting to work on some operational planning around conflagration management and suppression uh with our partners at PD and it would and the offices of that disaster management. So that becomes fast. As far as resilient landscapes, um the high-level strategy there is to utilize prescribed burning strategically across the landscape to reduce accumulated hazard vegetation. That is uh from a fire management standpoint and from a a response standpoint, it's the best bang for the buck as far as removing hazardous fuels, accumulations, and reducing fire impact or fire severity. Incredible tool, and uh I definitely one hundred percent agree with with this particular recommendation is that it's a tool we need to use more often. And then lastly, in the Fire-Adapted Communities section, um we want to explore the adoption and enforcement of defensible space and building facilities. As Pam said, I know that's high on the list of priorities and that is definitely a recommendation we we definitely want to follow up on. And then, again, tying into to the work that we'd already started uh was to establish a defensible grant, a defensible space grant program to increase our homeowner mitigation and home hardening actions. And again, I'm happy to say that that work has already begun and is moving forward. Next slide, please. So to highlight some of those ongoing work pieces, at least from from Boulder Fire Rescue, our home safety assessments or or detailed home assessments for wildfire risk are are well underway with our addition of our uh risk, uh community risk reduction staff. Uh we've worked through the the previous backlog and and all of that backlog has at least been scheduled for assessment and we're working on accepting new uh detailed home assessments. And again, that program is tied directly to uh the up-and-coming grants program that's moving forward. Some good response system improvements, uh we've moved to what we call indices-based dispatching and have adopted across our our consortium partners in the fire service, uh what we call a standard of cover. So now we are utilizing um real-time weather and fuels data to drive our response decisions. So uh to keep it simple, if it's hot, dry, and windy, we are adding way more firefighters and fire engines to the response initially as opposed to sending a standard single-engine company to determine that they have a problem and ask for more stuff. We're stacking that alarm box a a little heavier from the get-go if the conditions warrant. And I think that's, that's been a really big uh, a really big help in the fire suppression realm. And then, of course, as I mentioned earlier, the updated structure protection plan, we're almost completed with that. And that's been a big lift as we transition from traditionally paper maps and and some other little more uh archaic methods to a to a more shareable digital platform that that's gonna be a lot more user-friendly. I'm pretty happy that that's almost done. Several updates to our alert and warning systems and evacuation planning processes. If there are questions on that, of course, we can, we have some some colleagues in the in the room that will definitely help us explain that. And then uh the Regional Incident Management Team, so Boulder County uh fields a type-three wildland fire incident management team. And the city are, my division and my uh colleagues at Boulder County Fire Management, we co-manage that team. That's important because what that does is it helps us uh get the high-level response and the the high-level incident managers here quickly. And it's more regional and uh it's a much more collaborative uh response as things emerge and and become too big for for any one jurisdiction. And that's, that happens more often than not in the wildfire world. So those are some some, that's a really, again, trying to be quick and and keep it high-level and not dive into the minutia of 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 a million different things within the plan. But that's really some high-level orientation to the plan, some work that that ties directly to that plan and things that we're we're moving forward through from the Fire Department. And and I'd like to turn it over to Dan Burke at Open Space and Mountain Parks to to touch on some of the high-level things that Open Space does that continues this work as well.
Great. Thank you, Brian. Uh good evening, council. It's great to be here to talk about the CWPP. Um I'm gonna bring us home in terms of the presentation. Got a few more slides for you before we turn it over for questions and a response period. Got a few slides that are focused on uh wildfire resilient landscapes and some of the work that we're doing. And the intention of bringing these slides forward and these updates forward is really to emphasize the fact that the CWPP is filled with recommendations that are we're already doing or continuing, recommendations of enhancing efforts that uh maybe we have done, but we need to enhance those, bring those up to the next level, and a sprinkling of things that we actually need to do, some new things that we haven't done before. And I want to use my slides to sort of emphasize those th- those three points, and then I will bring us to conclusion. So as most of you know, uh Open Space has uh been in the work of wildfire uh protection, mitigation, resilience for many, many years. In fact, the city of Boulder was the first, one of the first municipalities to develop and implement a forest ecosystem management plan. And in that plan, it's it's really about bringing together ecosystem health, forest health. And then by doing so, you have that co-benefit of re uh mitigating risk of extreme wildfires. So uh again, that's sort of the blend that Open Space looks at this issue. If we can keep our natural areas healthy, uh there's this great co-benefit of reducing the risk of fuel uh uh that can fuel extreme wildfires. So what does the CWPP do for Open Space and other land managers that are also adopting uh CWPPs throughout the region? Well, really, it aims to enhance wildfire mitigation efforts on city-managed lands, but to build and foster new partnerships for cost, cross-boundary work. As you know, our lands intersect with county-owned lands and uh forest lands, a lot of private lands. And so really, it's a a total group partnership effort. Next slide, please. So in terms of uh what is that ongoing work that the CWPP calls out for us to continue to do? And really, here are some of the basic uh go-to strategies that we have found to be tremendously effective. Tree thinning, uh we have nearly doubled our forestry crew over the uh over the last few years. We now have thirteen staff members that are out on our lands uh on a daily basis uh on forest health uh um actions, which has that co-benefit of wildfire uh mitigation um uh work. We also uh work with prescribed burn burning, and that is something we do in partnership with Brian and Chief Callarazzo's team, as well as our county partners. And this year, we've done a number of agricultural burns of grasslands in our ditch corridors. We would like to bring that program even further to do more landscape level burning, because that is perhaps one of the most effective ways to reduce our fuels. Prescribed burning is a difficult program to enhance, but we think that we can get there. And through our partnership set, the CWPP alludes to. Weed management is one of those things that you may not associate with wildfire, reduce wildfire risk, but it, but it very much is tied to that. And the integrated management approach of reducing noxious weeds and prevent their spreads has that co benefit of reducing fine fuels on our system, which could increase extreme fires, the likelihood for it. We've also just want to, if you are interested in more of these strategies that we do as land managers, managers, we have a great website that's developed that talks about these and others in more detail. Next slide, please. I mentioned ongoing efforts and then those efforts that we are looking to enhance. We know that for many, many years, we've worked with locals, farmers and ranchers. You may not know, but about 15,000 acres of our city owned lands are in some form of agricultural production. And any given year, we have, we partner with between 25 and 30 local farmers and ranchers to carry out agricultural activities on our system. Well, cattle grazing mimics cattle, uh, large herbivores that used to be on the system, such as bison. And what that, what, what this does is not, is not only an economic contribution to the county, but it's also reduces noxious weeds and it reduces fine fuels on our system. So what we have found by doing targeted cattle grazing experiments in the Shanahan Ridge area is through our monitoring, this has greatly reduced our fine fuel loads in this area while reducing the presence and keeping at bay the presence of the noxious weed tall oak grass. And so you will see the cattle now up on our system there. And there wasn't cattle for many, many years up here. And we've started to reintroduce the, reintroduce cattle over the last few years and have expanded that to a number of different enclosures. And in the coming months, we're actually going to be partnering with NCAR to build a cattle enclosure on NCAR to help expand this work of fine fuel reduction. Next slide. And finally, I want to talk about new work, something that we're going to be undertaking in the next few weeks. And we've already started to put the word out that on, on that. We are piloting a perimeter mowing program where OS and B, OS and P will mow a 30 foot strip of open space next to four neighborhoods to help reduce wildfire risks. We are targeting mainly grasslands and we are targeting high, high risk communities on the western interface of the city. The goal is to reduce these grasses down to four to six inches in height that will, and the mowing will incur, occur twice a year. And that what we'll do is we'll be monitoring that to make sure that we're not having any adverse effects to our native grasslands and that we're having the intended effect of reducing fine fuel loads and reducing the risk directly adjacent to our highly prone and more high up risk community members and and structures. And next slide, please. So what's next? Well, the CWPP provides the city with a guidance and recommendations for continuing, enhancing and developing new strategies and approaches for how to make our community and our natural landscapes more resilient to wildfire. So with the final CWPP finally in hand, our attention is turning towards how best to integrate all these CWPP recommendations into existing and future work plans. And this will be accomplished through the development of an action plan that will detail timelines, identify needed capacities, and sort of note responsibilities and role clarity for completing high priority actions, projects and programs contained within the CWPP. This action plan will be happening at the same time that we are continuing all of the great wildfire resilience work that the city is already undertaking. So the immediate next steps towards this end include, we're convening a summit, in fact, next Friday, of the city's wildfire resilient core and executive team members, about 30, 35 of us in all, to begin working on this action plan. Simultaneously, the city is developing a strategic communicate, is developing strategic communications of how best to inform, educate and encourage community members to join the wildfire resilience efforts. And throughout this implementation process, we will seek to keep council informed and updated. And as Pam alluded to, there will be specific items that we will be bringing to the council for their consideration and action in the next year or two. Finally, we have developed and will soon begin to populate a monitoring and tracking dashboard so the community can follow along with our implementation prog, progress. A snapshot of that dashboard is shown here. And it will be community facing. And once we begin to populate that dashboard, we will do some, get the word out of, of putting, letting the community know where they can kind of track our progress as we start to implement some of these recommendations. So that concludes the staff presentation portion of this evening. And we're kind of anxious and excited about getting into the question and answer period. And we just populated a couple of questions in here for council to consider. Does city council have any questions regarding the purpose, content or the implementation of the CWPP? And which of these recommendations or these recommendation themed areas are of the highest interest to council to be considered as staff begins to develop this action plan? So with that, I will turn it back over to Councilmember Shuart to begin the question and answer period.
Thank you, Mr. Burke, and thank you, Assistant City Manager Pam Davis and team for this. I would suggest a similar format as before. We could just go in order. And we've got the two questions there for folks to reflect on. And if you like, you could add any other thoughts to your discussion and then we can maybe just do it with one point each. I am now entertaining hands raised to speak. Okay, Councilmember Markless.
Yeah, thank you so much for providing the plan. And it was really long, but given the level of interest of wildfire in the community, I actually appreciated having a lot of details about what the different groups are doing to help keep our community safe and resilient toward wildfire, especially when we're still in the aftermath of the Marshall Fire. So, so it was really with great interest that I read through all 370 pages. So, yeah, it was great. So I have a couple of questions that I think are particularly important because, as you mentioned, some of this information will intersect with some of the other decisions we'll be making as a council. So the first was, there's a map that shows what the the wooi is, the orange area in Boulder, but it's different than the somewhat narrow line of orange that will be, that we're going to have the construction code. And I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about why the area that would have the construction code applied to it, if I'm understanding it correctly, is so much smaller than the rest of the city. I was, I was surprised it didn't go in very deep into the city of Boulder from the western edge. Is that making sense?
It, it does. And, and to speak to that, I'll try to speak clearly enough. Apparently, my mic's not working that well. So there's, there's some operational delineation around wooi and then, of course, building code around wooi. And they are two separate animals. And I would like to bring in Fire Marshal David Lowery, if he's in the room, I believe he is, to, to kind of define a little bit of, of why we delineated the, the building code wooi different from, from what we consider as, as like operational wooi in the wildland, chief, if you would please.
Yeah. So what you have when we look at like the map links in the city of Boulder and that smaller thinner line that we kind of made up with the red, orange and yellow, we're defining the ignition resistant type construction. And that is out of our current adopted wildland interface code that we've had adopted really since 2013, right? And that requires that ignition resistant construct, construction in that identified urban interface. And we use the definition that we adopted within that code that really is kind of a, a definition that specifically talks about the wildland as it comes in contact with homes and or structures within that interface to try to resist them from igniting on fire. And we've brought it in a little bit more than, than maybe normal as well. The wooi zone, the wooi, the big orange kind of thing that was in the CWPP, that was more done from kind of a AI sporadic type data that just kind of looks at I don't know exactly what was done. It's kind of almost zip code ish type thing. And, you know, where it kind of came in as, as Boulder is in the foothills and it's subject to wildfire. So I can't really explain what, what's in the CWPP, but I can, I can definitely, you know, could go into more detail, probably not needed in this meeting about how we looked at and defined the wooi as it pertains to our adopted code.
Okay. And so would we, would you anticipate when we talk about fire resilient construction codes, that it would apply to that thin strip? Or would it go a little bit deeper perhaps until sort of the Broadway area 36? I mean, what, what's the, do, do we differentiate in terms of the neighborhoods in terms of vulnerability or how far an ember can fly or whatever the?
Yeah, well, as we start looking at adopting the, the next set of I codes, which the, the wildland interface code be part of that, we're certainly going to be looking at that. And now that we have more, you know, scientific modeling and ember casting type modeling that we can do, we have already had that discussion of saying, you know, let's look at this as far as a, 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 a interface, maybe like a risk and then maybe a, an interface impact of what an ember cast may be and deciding on what hardening methods we should put and maybe that interface impact area.
Okay, so that's helpful. So that'll be sort of a more to come in terms of what might be the high priority areas where we would give more emphasis to on resilient construction codes that not all areas will be treated the same.
Correct, correct. And they're not now, right? I mean, the different colors, the red, the orange and the yellow are different, different levels of ignition resistant construction. So it would be similar to that.
Okay. My next question is about how the community can connect with the evacuation plans that we have for different neighborhoods that are close to the urban interface. And whether we've done modeling that can help us understand the impact to our, especially to our west east roadways as well as impacts for increasing population or decreasing population and how we make sure that we manage that when we make decisions, especially as it might relate to iris, or as it might relate to increasing density close to the wooi.
That's a fantastic question. And I see he's already taken himself off mute. Thanks, Mike. ODM Director Mike Char definitely has, has the subject matter expertise in that realm.
A couple of ways to answer the question. I'll take what we're doing on the planning side. Part of the conflagration planning work we're doing with fire department, we have extended that into the police department and have started that, that planning process. What we're doing is taking the evacuation zones that are already established for the western flank of the city and have asked our traffic division within police department, working with their sergeants to assess the number of officers to go door to door, assess the routes that would be used even beyond what we've already defined as the primary evacuation routes in the city. And then put a tighter lens on that specific polygon area, which is the shape of that evacuation area, and come up with a traffic control plan and identify the traffic control points and choke points, which would require an officer to be there to help keep traffic moving, also identifying the critical evacuation facilities within those polygons. That will be done in this year. And that is going to be reused and leveraged then to run preparedness meetings within the community to show that information and be able to expand the knowledge around what it takes to evacuate. We've also done some time studies for clearing those evacuation zones so that, and then generally what we're seeing is it's about, we call it our required safe evacuation time for each polygon. And that's right around two hours, about a minute, an hour forty five, two hours. If we have a fire west of the city and it's beyond a decision marker. We've also looked at doing fire behavior modeling and identifying these decision marker points west of town that if a fire occurs there, it'll tell us whether or not we believe we're going to have enough evacuation time to be able to safely get the beauty out. And if not, then that changes the operational strategy or the fire department may have to go into a defensive posture about protecting evacuation route access, slow the fire as opposed to go direct suppression. It's all around getting time and, and reducing the speed of the fire moving into that built environment, which is all interconnected with part of that mowing and getting a 30 foot strip. That helps reduce speed and intensity, which will then hopefully decrease the impact zone into the city, which will get us time to be able to save and offer advantage to fire control and suppression. So that's the piece around the planning effort going now. And that'll be occurring on the whole western flank of the city. Because our biggest risk is the west to east high wind fire. And then, of course, we'll carry that to other areas of the city. But we're hitting our greatest risk priorities, priority right now. What we're doing, the preparedness side of the community, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
I was going to finish off. What we're currently doing around this and have been over the last year and a half is in our preparedness work and Monica Weber's are, are specialists in our office has developed tremendous number of preparedness documents. We have translated those into five different languages. We've held community meetings across the city, other monthly meetings. Some are in person, others are also online. We, some that we're actually doing is like, we have a workshop coming up here in May with the West Age Wells Center expanding in preparedness, the pet preparedness, working with, we got a homeowners association that set up for a drill that we're running in July. So we're currently doing preparedness work around evacuations and stressing the whole personal preparedness, knowing multiple ways out and sharing what we currently are doing in that evacuation space, knowing where to go to get information. And we've worked very hard to get maps up quickly. So we have that as part of our learning improvements that Brian was talking about with BOCO alerts, which sends a link to a map and the message that you get right away. And we're soon going to be launching a real time automated transferring of the learning polygons to our forward facing community maps. Interface required by human to get that information up and available to the community. And then also, we're going to be sending out what's called Word as part of our alerting package. Reports the initial evacuation that goes out and helps send text updates to our community members. And we've actually tied that sort of for that information to go to our OBM blog. And then also goes into our ReachWell app that we have for translating in over 100 languages automatically as our words come out of our dispatch center. So those keyword texts will also go into that text platform and into that ReachWell app and, and translate real time. So that's some of the work we're doing on evacuations. I'll be able to show more of that precise clearance time modeling and work in 24. And we have done some that work around the iris, looking at how that would impact with those potential recommendations around options for dealing with the traffic flow during evacuations.
And then, and that, that's like a lot of great information. It's really helpful as we reach out with the community. I'm, I know that I had spoken to you before and we talked a little bit about how we address people who are disabled or who don't have cars. And this idea of sort of a, a place to help connect those people with evacuation routes if they can't evacuate on foot. Is that something that's already in place or something that's forward thinking?
Yes, to both of those. We have prepared, we have developed a preparedness information for pedestrian preparedness and evacuation. That's on our ODM website. And Monica's been sharing that in the community during her meetings in the preparedness space. It's part of what we've also asked our law enforcement folks to, you know, take into account when they're doing the evacuation mission. It's not just going door to door traffic management, but then also thinking about, you know, folks that don't have vehicles to be able to transport. We're also coming up with a strategy that we're using 800 meters in or about 2,000 feet from the western edge, basically Broadway. So we're teaching people to get west of Broadway by foot. And then you're in a much lower risk or hazard area. So we're doing those sort of messaging to the community to arm people with that kind of message. So we're doing those sort of messaging to the community to arm people with that kind of message of what to do if they're on foot. And then. Some of the work we're doing also with this recent confirmation planning is incorporating our transportation department about. You know, we may have people have mobility issues. How do we uh bring in those transportation resources earlier? But once again, we're also stressing that people need to be taking some responsibility and. If you do have those challenges and require extra time to not necessarily wait for an evacuation order. But also uh self-initiate if you get a warning or if you feel you might be in danger, start to move ahead. Of that and, and give yourself some extra time. So it's within that community messaging piece. It's also trying to make that. Uh part of our response planning and getting those uh resources engaged as quickly as we can to support that need.
Okay, and then I just have one last question, um which is if a lot of parents, um. One of the things about the Marshall Fire School was not in session that day. But a lot of parents have children who are involved in schools that are outside of their neighborhood. Is it pretty easy to be able to sign up for a lot alerts that relate to both the school? Or even if you had a, an elderly parent or someone disabled in your family who works outside of your neighborhood. So that you could receive alerts for both the people who you're uh taking care of. As well as yourself. So you can get multiple alerts for different areas.
Yes, it is people who are in system, which is Everbridge, which is our nine-one-one. Or reverse nine-one-one is a Raymond's term for that. And we do promote that and advance that message in all our preparedness work. And we highlight that and say, you have a family member, kid at school, place of work, uh you know, elderly parents or whatever and you wanna get in work. For their location, that can be done. And we make, and that's in our preparedness information. We highlight that in all the. In-person uh preparedness sessions.
So, and if I were wanting to do that right now, where would I go to?
You go to our website and you go to our preparedness page where it says preparedness and it's highlighted right there and it walks people through it. Or they can call our office and we'd be happy to walk people through it, make sure. Uh sometimes. People just get a little intimidated by that, that signup process and we, we commonly will help people walk through that.
All right, thanks so much. It's really helpful.
Councilmember Benjamin.
Appreciate it and thanks for those uh great questions, you know. Um just for clarity, we're gonna do questions and then come back to the recommendation question later. Or he wants to do it all in one?
I was suggesting just to do it all, all in one go.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's fine. Just wanted to make sure we're on the same page. Appreciate it. Um, well, for one, I, I, I've gone through this document twice. Um it's meaty. It takes a few looks. Uh but, but I really appreciate the depth of which. Um the amount of intention that has gone into this. It's, it's really thorough. I know it seems intimidating for certainly a document this comprehensive, but there's a lot of great stuff in here. And I think. Our challenge is not the amount of information. It's how do we parse out the relevant information to share with our community? So, so that's gonna be an ongoing challenge, I think, for all of us and, but I know that we've got great people to do that, right? And so I, I'm confident in that, but I. That's the, that stage that we're in now is pull out the, the good stuff. Um and, and get it into communities' hands so that they are, have actionable information. Um I've got uh really three questions and then I, I'll. I'll give you quickly my, my recommendation numbers for you guys, my RLs. Um so I'll stick it in the lingo that's in the document. Um it follows on the I code conversation that Tina was going into. It, it's my understanding that even though the I codes will kinda lay out a specific. Uh geographic area for certain different types of building codes. It, it doesn't prohibit us from going above and beyond that. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so, so, so to Tina's point, like even though we might, we might think, oh, that's awfully thin area, we, we could expand that area at our discretion. So, so we could build that capacity of safety. So, oh, that's good. Awesome. Um another question is. Um with regards to a lot of the treatments, that map is, is really good to show the different treatments and. My question sent is around, is there a way to convey how long those treatments last and the frequency of the application? Uh an example is I can imagine the mowing treatment that Dan was referring to is certainly an annual and perhaps even a bi-annual treatment. Based on the weather we have. And, and so that just sets a community expectation of, all right, I could expect this. Whereas maybe. Forest thinning, on the other hand, could be a five or ten-year treatment uh because it lasts so long. And so giving that expectation. Uh is helpful because when you look at a map and all those colors, like, oh my God, look at all the area that's protected. You might go, well, this fall it won't be. Because we'll have to do that again. And so there's a timestamp thing that I think could be really helpful for us to make sure we're not. Uh we just have a realistic expectation of what those things are doing.
Yeah, that's a great question. Um and I'll, I'll take a quick stab at it. I see uh Paul Dennison's taking himself onto the video, so he might jump in and help me here. Um but yeah, you, you're, you're spot on. Uh a fuels, a mechanical fuels treatment in the forest is probably a five to ten-year effective. Um like prescribed fire or, or an actual fire that we've managed. Um same in that five to ten to fifteen-year realm of, of being an effective fuel break. Mowing is, or the grass, the fine fuels, um and reducing fine fuels is more of a, of a bi-annual thing. Um and I believe that the mowing pilot is to do uh twice a year. So peak uh right at the end of peak growing season in the spring. Uh and then again in the fall as things start to, we can knock those tall fuels down. So, yep, that's, that is right.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. And then you can, uh yeah, it's just however we can communicate that, that'll help community, I think, understand those things, especially if they're nearby and might be impacted on it. Um another question has to do with how we might evaluate um some of these recommendations with regards to insurance. I, I, if the Marshall Fire taught us anything, is that insurance is kind of the linchpin for residents. Um and certainly you have the insurance you think and we found it was gap coverage that was the Achilles heel for most people impacted by the Marshall Fire. And so I guess, and I know this document isn't regulatory, but I guess we're kinda, kinda lean on you guys as our experts is. What are some of those regulatory changes that we could implement? Or some of these treatments we can invest in at some frequency that perhaps maybe mitigates the insurance exodus. From communities that are in high wildfire risk like our own. Um and so I think that would be advice I would, I, I would ask you guys to inform us. Of what we could do in a, in a prioritized manner to help limit tho- that insurance exodus. Um from our community, because I think that's probably the biggest thing that community members will be uh worried about. I think we all. Except we live in a wooey. Uh we're gonna have a fire. It's not a matter of if, but when. But boy, when that comes, I wanna know I'm protected and my community did the most to make sure that I have an insurance market. So I'm not paying out of pocket to replace my home. So I'd love some evaluation if that's all possible, what, what's worked in other communities to help us evaluate a prioritization of those things.
Man, that's a fantastic question. Um I might have to phone another friend, might bring back uh Chief Lowry or Chief Calderaza to touch on that. But, but what I've seen is. The, the way most of the insurance providers are, are looking at, at things in a much broader scale, they're not looking at a parcel level, right? So, so even if we're requiring home hardening, sometimes that's not enough for them to, to take on that additional risk. Because the neighbors aren't or, or they can't prove the neighbors aren't. So that's, that's, that's a challenge. I think the biggest piece. Uh for us uh from a city standpoint is to, to engage with the insurance companies, create some kind of certification programs or some. Some mitigation measures that, that they can then accept in their, their risk profiles that will say. Yeah, okay, you are doing enough for us to continue uh with our insurance cover during insurance providing. That's my take, but, but maybe, maybe Chief C or, or Chief Lowry has another take on that one.
Uh, uh, good evening, Council. Mike Alderza, Fire Chief. Just, I would, I would just add to that, that yes, that's one of the areas where we definitely want to. If we can, if we can engage secondary insurers or primary insurers on the topic. And can have a recommendation for council, like what if council adopted something very uh progressive, would that change anything for the community? Uh that's a, that's absolutely a question we would love to be able to bring uh answers to you too when we have more conversations. So we will work on that. Appreciate the suggestion.
Uh I appreciate that, Chief. And I just maybe ask, it's a staffer major, like. Given we have a very busy workload and you're already working on this stuff. I just wanna ask, like, is doing that gonna add a big increase in workload or is that something? That you feel is within the capacity that we can sink our teeth into and in a reasonable amount of time, we can get that feedback, not only for us to know if there's regulatory actions we can take. But also to provide some of that understanding to community.
I would, I would say that I would definitely time that with the, the conversations around the ICC adoption process.
Okay.
Um because I do believe that, that is exactly when you'll wanna consider um. And, you know, more progressive, if you wanna be more progressive or more aggressive with um the code itself or even enforcement of the code. Um but we certainly can uh reach out and try to get that information from folks because. Uh I'm sure folks have heard of the ISO rating schedule and how that sometimes factors. Some insurers use that. Um for municipal fire protection. Um and that's, that's, it, that's just in line with some of the conversations we normally have. So I don't see it as a, as a heavy extra lift to engage insurers. It'll just be a question of. Of uh what they're willing to commit in terms of answers to us.
Awesome. I, I appreciate that. I think that'll be a big one per community. Well, and I'll just end. I'd, thanks for entertaining my, answering my questions.
I'm sorry, Matt. I see Mike's hand up and I don't know if it was about the same issue.
Yeah, it is. Uh, um. Matt, I think one of the things we can do to help tee this up is better to find the problem and using and leverage the experience and relationships of our communities that were involved in the Marshall Fire. There is a wealth of experience from people that lost their homes and experienced that. We have existing relationships already in that community dealing in those recovery spaces, be happy uh to uh pull together. Some of that shared experience that the community had and they think that can elevate some problems for council to consider. To then know questions to ask and maybe key that up with the insurance companies uh to better frame that. And uh we'll, I'll have something for you down the road. We have it in our preparedness uh work to. Kind of bring that in and learn from that experience to better help folks get affected.
Appreciate that, Mike.
You bet.
Thank you so much. Well, I, I, I'll leave space for other questions from colleagues, but I'll just leave you with my recommendations. Um I, I think of priority. Um are your RL two um with regards to um uh property hardening and mitigation and that zero to three timeframe. RL five, grassland, I think that's what Dan was meant, that's, that's the work Dan is mentioning. I think increasing and enhancing that is key. RL eleven with regards to prescribed burns. I mean, these are really active engagements, active activities to sort of keep the fuel loads down. And then RL thirteen, which is sort of residential overgrowth and rubbish. I, I, I mean, those seem to be like the four big things that if we were to accelerate. Or, or move in a faster timeline on, those would I, I'd be what I would recommend uh of that list for us to sort of pare down to. So I appreciate that. Thank you, guys.
Councilmember Adams and Weiner came up around the same time. I think you're in that order. Is that right? Okay, Councilmember Adams, please.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Thank you um to the team for this really robust um presentation and of course. And I also just wanna thank as a new council member, the orientations that we received. Um you know, it just really teed up nicely for this conversation and to be able to read that three hundred and seventy-page document. It just was very grounding to have those conversations before having to read that. And again, you know, but our community members don't have that. Um opportunity. And so it's really helpful to see again how you're working with the infrastructures that we have, whether it be the community connectors. Or partners like the Boulder Watershed Collective. So um just really grateful around that. Um only have a couple of questions and responses. And I'd say um the most important question that I have. Is something that we talked about during the council retreat, but just the need to have a fiscal note. Um and, and this is becoming, this is especially important as we think about the different options and to know what the fiscal implications of these different options are. I think especially in light of some of the fiscal challenges that we have in other areas would have been really helpful. So. In general, I think that's something as we're making these decisions, this is a study session, but as it gets to a place where we need to make a decision. I think having that fiscal data will be really critical. And on that note, I had curiosities just around the climate tax. Um and how much of that tax is used to support some of this preparedness, like where is just kind of the fiscal gaps? I know there's a lot of intergovernmental braiding from a funding perspective to make this a reality. And so I'm very sensitive to having a better understanding of the fiscal positions and the way that those fundings are braiding. Um considering some of the um federal challenges that we are, we know that are on the horizon with the end of ARPA funds. That are impacting some other programs. And so again, just having that financial note or financial information will be really critical. Um and, and actually quite frankly, it's hard for me to, you know, I was looking at all these different things. I was like, yes, this one, no, no, this one, no, no, this one. And I, I. They were not urgent and important. It's really hard to figure out what depth we wanna lean in. Um and, and you know, but to, to um Matt's earlier point, I certainly think that there are some that rise. But even within the rise, I can't pick one or two. Um you know, it's usually like three or four. So again, having that fiscal note and level of information will be really critical. Um I'm always, you know, as the only renter on our, on our council, I'm always very mindful about bringing up the rental perspective and. You know, when I think about house hardening as a renter, rented for thirteen years here. Um you know, in my time and I've had really fantastic property owners that I've had the opportunity to rent from. But I don't recall them giving me any information about um, you know, the status of our home hardening and those kinds of things. And so. Again, and also just from a renter perspective, those aren't the things that we wanna bring up because, you know, it makes, you know, our leases are, many of us are year to year. So when we bring these things up, these are just more things that could potentially raise our rent. So I also just wanna be mindful and, and curious about the ways that you are. Working with property owners uh both for our big uh apartment complex and townhomes, um as well as our single-family homes. So that's my first question.
Uh that's a great question. I appreciate the feedback on the, the, the financial implications. That's, that is a big piece. Um. As far as the renters, we are working through our CRR team um is, is trying to create those connections, working through community connectors and some other avenues. To, to make sure that we're connecting with renters and property owners both uh to ensure that. That those, I mean, the assessments are, are given to, to either, right? We don't technically need the, the property owner. Um we need permission to, to come on the property and a renter can do that. So, so doing assessments and things like that, we, we provide that for, for, for both. Um and then again, as we move to implementation. Or you're trying to, uh or the renters trying to um make those recommendations happen. Um we wanna connect and, and that ties into, to that up and coming grant program where we can also then help provide some of that financial assistance across. Um that avenue to, to keep that as, as, as cost minimal as, as possible for, for the renting population.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. And you know, again, affordability is always an issue that we have here. So. You know, even if we did do that assessment, I could imagine they would have identified things that cost money. And so I also, uh again, if we can. Um you know, um reduce some of that, that burden. Um I think it will allow more people to be willing. To do the assessment in the first place, right? Um and so thank you very much for, um for that response. I also wanted to um, you know, bring up the question about. Um you know, there's a lot of public engagement and public training and um around this. And so. Just trying to figure out, can you talk a little bit about your approach to one determining what does the community know, right? There's a diversity within the diversity within our community. And so I'm just kind of curious what data points you're, that you're gathering to determine. What grain size of training that you need to provide to our different community members. And then the other side of that question is how you're tracking who has been trained. So again, you know, community is big, but there's, I'm just curious if you kind of, you know, I know when I, I've done some projects in the past with the. Boulder Watershed Collective and I know they had been talking and exploring like a, a wildlife ambassador program that's really neighborhood specific. Or, but I'm just trying to figure out how you all kinda get a handle on, you know, who's been trained, are there neighborhood captains? Obviously. You know, the HOA structure allows for a little bit more um, you know, collaboration and consistency versus those who aren't on the HOA. So just curious how you kinda manage, um you know, who needs to be, be trained on, on what? And, and yeah, just, just from a community perspective.
Yeah, um that's, that's a good question. I know our, our CRR staff uh has all kinds of, of ways they're connecting with the community and, and ensuring that. Um that they're, they're kinda capturing that. Um Chief Lowry, I would love for you to help us out on, on how we. How we're gathering that data from, from the community risk reduction standpoint.
And the effectiveness of what is being offered.
Yeah, I think uh we can certainly do that. Obviously, we're um, we're looking at targeting uh the most vulnerable part of our community. And that's, that, that interface area on that western border that we've kind of identified. So uh I think our most effective right now has been uh HOAs and their involvement of improving their. Uh uh association uh from that risk. Uh and we've been uh working with and developing community ambassadors. Within those neighborhoods, whether it's a formal HOA or if it's just a, a neighborhood ambassador. Uh that really kinda spearheads the uh, the spearheads, cheerleads. Kind of that whole uh, uh wildland effort with uh cleanup days and uh different programs. Uh juniper awareness and, and all this kinda stuff that we have been uh working on. Uh tracking it, yeah, I mean, you, you know.
Wait, what is clarification, David, on that part? So for, for that part, um. If you're like, you're actually tracking, you know, you kinda like have a map of like who has and, 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 you know. If I wanted to find out who the, if I have an ambassador, how could I find, how would I find that information out? Where can I go?
Yeah, so uh I don't wanna tell you that we have. Yeah, so I don't want to tell you that we have a map of that kind of stuff. We have a map of the interface, right?
If, if a community member wanted to know if they had a, a wildlife ambassador for their neighborhood, how would they find that information out?
Yeah, I mean, they can certainly reach out to us. And if we know it, then, then we'll certainly, we can certainly tell them. But we don't have a specific, so there is a wildfire ambassador program that we've been working on, but it's not formal at this time is what I would tell you. We do things like walkarounds and walkabouts with organized groups in our community, like Devil's Thumb HOA, Ponderosa Mobile Home Park. We've got one scheduled June third or fourth for the western part of Arapahoe. And that's going to be incongruent with Boulder County and, and their wildfire, wildfire partners as that goes through there. So, yeah, I mean, you know, that's, that, that, that's where we're at right now. And we're kind of like trying to shepherd in that ambassador program. But, you know, in that same sense, we can't force it on HOAs either right now.
Well, you know, I was in an HOA for about eight years and now I'm not. So, and I didn't know that, that there were ambassadors for our neighbors. So I'm just hopeful that we can find other mechanisms to ensure that our community, again, our resources only as good as our community knows that it exists. So again, I'm happy to know we have one.
So you understand. And we do have formal training. And I think we've done up to ten members in the formal, formal ambassador training.
Okay, well, I look forward to another time maybe getting a little bit more information about that ambassador training and as it becomes more formal. And then just lastly, I just wanted to,
Can I colloquiate, Taysha, on that HOA piece you just mentioned? Can I colloquiate on that? So if it's my understanding, we, we had a similar sort of disagreement with HOAs with regards to shake shingles. And we overcame that because it was critical life safety. And so I, it, it, it seems like these issues of wildfire hardening and some of this stuff falls almost directly into the same kind of definition. And so it makes me wonder, maybe, maybe we do have more authority here with regards to getting each HOAs to be consistent with how we implement with the rest of the city. So I just, it seems awfully similar to how we were able to get implementation and cohesiveness in our community with regards to the shinks, shake singles. So I just want to throw that out there. So, but appreciate it. And if I'm wrong, then I'm wrong, but that's how I recall it.
Any response to Matt's quote unquote?
Chief? If I could just throw in there, these are, these are great points that you're making, Councilmember Adams. And I, I, the data and the connections in the community, I, I would say that this group, Chief Lowry's team, there's, basically, we hired three additional members for that team, and they've only really been operational within the last, what, is it six months tops? That they've really had been able to hit the ground running as a team. It's not been super long. And so one of the things, we're trying to work on those things. So having outcomes and, you know, making this, this more mature in terms of the home assessments and connecting with the community and making sure that folks have a place to go because we need those force multipliers, that's all part of their, their mandate. But really, it's, it's super new. Last year, this time or the year before, I was actually using our emergency response personnel to help us with the backlog of, of home assessments that had come in because we just didn't have the staffing. But we got that staffing and they're on now on, on the ground running. And those are definitely, all your points are things we want to absolutely want to, to bring to bear. So outcomes, making sure folks know who to contact. And it's not always just the fire department. You've got people right there embedded with you in your neighborhood.
Absolutely. I definitely appreciate that. And then lastly, just for, you know, some lift ups from the list of themes. Evacuations is something I really appreciated, Tina, what you shared. And Ryan, I know this is something that I've discussed with you as well, but as we are having more dense transit oriented communities and less cars, there just seems to be a higher level of coordination. So Mike, I really appreciate the conversations that we've had and the thinking that you already are doing around those who don't have cars or people with disabilities, et cetera. But again, you know, I, I just think of the Iris for All conversation that we're having right now. And evacuation was one of the, of the pain points that have come up. And so again, just having some additional modeling and, and supporter and coordination. And again, that's where some of that ambassador work comes into play, right? To have those relationships before you need them is, is really the name of the game as far as, as prevention is concerned. So I definitely want to lift that up. The home hardening, again, I think that was actually something, Matt, that we already have as a council priority. So if anything, I'm curious, now that it's a council priority, how does that change what was already on the, on the radar screen? Are there more latitude and, and opportunities? And again, this is why I always ask about money and funding. You know, we know we have historic climate money on the table right now. And, and if there's opportunities for us to go after more, I certainly want to be able to do that. Grasslands, as a former member of the Colorado Natural Areas Council, I would be remiss if I did not lift up grasslands as a major prevention opportunity. And, and I just look at those deep root systems. There was a time when I would look and think, oh, that's a great place to build a strip wall. And now I look and say, that is ten feet of deep root systems. That is, is the type of resilience that we need. So those are some of the things. But as I said, I looked at that list and there wasn't anything that I don't think we should do. So if anything, it's really the question of what are the fiscal implications and limitations of what we can do now? And, and you know, what is urgent and important versus important? So again, those are just some of the things. Oh, and then lastly, I, I cannot echo or co-sign the insurance conversation enough just to watch our insurance companies leave out of other states is just very scary. And, you know, again, I think I'm curious where there might be opportunities to innovate in ways that we hadn't thought of. And then lastly, I mean, this, this time is the arts. And so, you know, as we are talking about communicating things that are urgent and important, I would be remiss if I didn't say, can we not only rely on our communications engagement team? There's a whole music, dance, theater, ways that we can creatively engage and educate our community on these issues. And I really encourage us to think differently about the ways that we partner with our arts community beyond just the traditional ways that we have. So, you know, again, I used to also, in the many hats that I wore, I've actually ran and designed arts education programs. And so integrating the arts into science and math, there is tons of evidence around the increased effectiveness of anything you're trying to do when arts are involved. So just wanted to lift that up as I, as I sign off on my questions. But again, exceptional presentation and materials and just really appreciate being on this team. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Good point of order. I've been asked to remind folks to please introduce yourselves. There's a big team of folks here and we're, we're bouncing conversations around. So please introduce yourselves so folks can follow. Thank you for that. And I'll just, I think the list I have next is Councilmember Weiner, the Folkerts, Spear, Rocket. Say something if I got that wrong, otherwise that's their order. And we're approaching the nine o'clock hour. So guys, okay, go ahead.
I'm going to make it short. Do I need to introduce myself? No, or yes?
Councilmembers don't need to introduce themselves. Let's, let's say that. And either it is Syria.
Okay. All right. So I don't need to repeat everything everybody said. I only want to bring up one point. And that is the insurance discussion because for, I know that in the, as my husband tells me, the eight oh three oh two area code, we were dropped from home, our insurance company dropped us because of our zip code, eight oh three oh two, because of the possibility of fire. So then we had a race around looking for insurance and it wasn't easy to get it at all. So I, I know that really stressed us out and I can't imagine we're the only ones. I did a little perusal of good old next door and noticed that a lot of people were worried about that. So I would say that the community would probably want to do anything possible to make sure that we can have insurance, right? Because like Matt said, it certainly, you don't want to have to build back, you know, your own house that had burned out. So I'm going to say for me, anything to do with insurance might be probably one of the, I think, one of the community's number one stressors right now. So I'm just gonna colloquy on to everybody else who spoke about insurance and say that I hope that we can prioritize that. And whatever we need to do, like what we had to do to get insurance was half cut our trees. We had to cut our trees. What do you call it when you cut them from down? So they, what is that called?
Limbing.
What?
Limbing your trees.
Oh, yeah. Well, now our trees have bad hair, haircuts. It's, I can't even go back there. It's physical. It's, it's offensive to me. Anyway, so that whole situation and then what we had to do with our neighbors to get insurance, I feel like is probably on the top of everybody's minds. So if you say, and you come back to council and say, get rid of your junipers, you have to get rid of them or do this or do this or do that. Because you're going to, for insurance sake, I think people are going to really care about that. Aside from all the great things that you said, and I'm sure like the, the mowing on the, on the interface and all the other things everybody else mentioned. I just want to add that if I'm a case, you know, for what's been happening to some neighborhoods close to the wooie then, or on the wooie actually then, people are pretty stressed.
Okay. Is that it for Councilmember Weiner? Okay, I think, sorry, do we have, people from Folkerts next? Is that right?
Thanks, Ryan.
Please.
Okay, I had one question about something that came up in the presentation and that was the, the landscape, the perimeter mowing. And I was just wondering, is there not a planting buffer or a treatment that could be done that doesn't require mowing twice a year? I just was curious how we got to that as the, maybe because of the amount of area.
I'm sure there's lots of reasonable explanations and,
Yeah, I think Paul, Paul Dennison's probably our best subject matter expert on that. He's helping to develop the, the program and, and why we're doing certain things and where.
Just sort of because last week we were having a conversation about gas mowing equipment and
Oh.
Just sort of interested in how we get here where we're like, we're going to mow more things.
Yeah. And this is weed whipping. We call it the mowing program, but it's a weed whipping. Yeah. But anyway, Paul, and you introduce yourself too.
Yes, I'm Paul Dennison, the Wild and Fire Senior Program Manager for Open Space and Mountain Parks. So could you provide a little more background as to the conversation you mentioned? And perhaps less of a reliance on using gas powered tools? Is that the concern or do you have other concerns as well?
Yeah, I think that was sort of, I mean, that was what we were discussing last week. And generally, I'm interested as we look at our landscaping requirements for property owners and trying to create more pathways that are more friendly towards less maintenance. And so this just flagged, you know, I was just curious how we get to this point with our public lands where the path that makes most sense is more mowing.
Okay, I'm not sure I completely understand the question. The objective is to reduce fire intensity through reducing fuel height. So we'll expect to see lower rates of spread and lower flame lengths within that thirty foot area. And the sites that are selected are very close to residential properties. So the,
I get that. I guess I was wondering more about long-term treatments. Like, would it make sense to have a gravel path through there or to plant something, different kinds of plants that don't require mowing that aren't as flammable? I don't know. I don't have a recommendation for what I think an answer was. I just was curious if we'd thought about that.
If I may, Councilmember and I, Paul, I'll try to get you out of this one because you weren't at the last meeting. I think I know where you're going. And, and what I might say is maybe we can get back to you because I do think we're going, that it seems in Congress, right? That the one side we're thinking about, how do we minimize the impacts of gas powered lawn mowers? And yet here we're talking about on open space, thinking about that, right?
And I'm totally open to,
Absolutely.
The, absolutely the definite, the direction we need to move. I was just wondering about.
I think you're asking what alternatives might there be to reduce the need to mow?
Yeah. And I'll, I'll just say, Councilmember Folker said this, there's a number of reasons why we're dubbing this as a pilot program. And one of the reasons is, is to test the, really the feasibility of doing this, the scalability, and then the effectiveness. But in the most part, we are dealing with a native landscape. So there's that trade-off question. One of the big themes that came out of the C W P public engagement is, can we do this work while balancing ecosystem health? Like, can we not, can we not do one and, and just replace it with the other? So we would love to be able to come up with a solution there where we're not replacing our native habitat with manmade materials, for instance. I think we would get a lot of pushback for that. So, but I, I think it's an interesting question about, well, if it's not native grass, what could be there? It's certainly something we can bring in into our monitoring. We have a whole monitoring program associated with this pilot program. So interesting question.
That sounds great. Thank you for that. And then I also wanted to touch on the insurance question. While I support us trying to look at things to help, you know, bring properties more into line with what insurance companies are looking for and asking for. I've had work recently where insurance companies are asking for some fairly strange things like requiring asphalt shingles on low slope roofs. So it seems like they also need to update some of the things around what they consider to be appropriate and require. So where are they aligned with things that we as a city think is best practice? I fully support that. But also maybe having some conversations around trying to get them to go in a better direction when that's appropriate too. And then in terms of what I'd like to see prioritized, I really trust our great staff. I think you've been, you know, diving into this and know the ins and outs of it more than I ever could. And I trust your recommendations in terms of how we move swiftly and efficiently and effectively. So looking forward to hearing more recommendations from you. Thank you.
Okay, is that it? Councilmember Folkerts? Okay, so I think we have Mayor Perchance here next, but I see that, uh, Councilmember Markwitz and, and Adams' hands are up. Do you both have colloquies or? Are your hands not meant to be up? Markwitz?
I'm just waiting.
I didn't, I didn't give my recommendations yet. I only did half.
Okay. Why don't, why don't we go to Mayor Perchance, Spear and Rocket? And then we'll, we'll go, we'll go back to other comments once everybody's had a chance to, to go. Go ahead, Mayor Perchance.
Thank you. I just had one question and then just a couple of comments on number two. My question was just around, you know, you mentioned the ambassadors, the wildfire ambassadors kind of volunteer program. I was wondering if there's a space for volunteers or if you're thinking about it in terms of hardening, like hardening the areas around people's homes and things like that too. Because I'm thinking I absolutely loved our wildfire home assessment. It was so, so useful. And I wish I had a team of, of folks who can come in and help. And, you know, I know with O S M P and Parks and Rec, right, we have space for even the summer workers, high school students, folks to come out and help with some of this. I'm just wondering if there's any space for a similar program to kind of help, help the community, help homeowners, renters, anybody that needs a little extra support in terms of hardening the area around their homes.
That's a, that's a fantastic question. And it's, and it's, I think, a great idea. And to Chief Calderazzo's point a little bit ago is, is that team is just kind of getting up and running with, with some of their programs, working through a, a really heavy backlog of, of home assessments. And, and now they're in a place where they can start diving into some of those things. And I, and I'm sure that that's on, on the program manager's radar screen is to, is to start establishing some of those volunteer programs to help implement some of those recommendations we're making.
And, and Brian, I might just add that the upcoming community grants program has that as a component. So you, you go through a detailed home assessment and then they'll educate you about a new grants program, which provides funding to implement it. And as part of that, we're identifying contractors that might, that would be a Uh, that might, that would be available to help carry out that work. So we're trying to reduce that gap between, like, I got my assessment, now what? And then you have a funding source, you have a list of contractors and and trying to just kind of connect all those dots.
Thank you. Um, and on number two, just in terms of recommendations, I don't have kind of specific lines to recommend. But I think what I'm most interested in is spending some time thinking about what the prioritization scheme is going to be. And what are the things that we are using to kind of prioritize across all of these different um ideas? The uh, so you know, for example, we have our um sustainability, equity and resilience framework within the budget. You know, how do we get to having something like that that can help us for each of these different possibilities, have some information around? Um, how is it going to impact sustainability, equity, resilience, cost, staff time? You know, how are we going to figure out what's giving us the best thing for um our buck and and how can we do the most good? So for example, um, thinking about our water supply. And how we need clean water for the city, right? So when if there's a fire or some big event up by. Uh, where our water is coming from, then that's that, that's a potential, you know, impact on the entire city um at that point. And so just like thinking about how we are getting at the scale of potential threats and how we um. I I don't, I don't know what that answer is. You all are, you all are the people who are going to figure this out. Um, I'm just really interested in knowing what that prioritization scheme is. Uh, a couple of other things, so you know, uh, where are we getting the biggest bang for our buck, um, both short term as well as long term? Um, is there anything that, you know, we're in a critical window where we really need to start it in the next zero to five years? Otherwise, we're going to be way behind or it's going to be too late or something. That's another thing that I think about in the prioritization. Um. And um, also, are there any places where we can kind of catch a ride on some work that's already ongoing? Um, so I'm thinking about our just emergency alert system, you know, we. Uh, we we just kind of got into a situation again with the power shutdowns where. We're really having to think about how are we communicating information with folks in the city? Are there any places where we can, you know, combine efforts? So that we can get sort of a two for one deal, but that's another place where I would think about um things being higher priority. And then um. Oh, the other thing that um I would think also think about in in terms of hitching a ride with other ongoing efforts. There's also how to align um efforts. So I've mentioned this to the folks who did the uh home wildfire assessment for me, but that. The uh, the leave the leaves idea, right, that that we should leave our leaves on the ground. Um, that's what we hear from some groups in the city and then hearing from, you know, fires, like, no, no, please don't ever do that. It's gonna, gonna be problematic. Um, so you know, how how are we uh making sure that as we're educating folks? Um, in different departments, we're aligning with the education efforts of wildfire prevention too. Um, and then, you know, the other, the other thing that I think is just tricky and I'm I'm so eager to see how you all figure this out. Um, is how do we balance the need for um? Kind of quicker pivots and some real adaptability as we get farther into the climate crisis. With the need to plan and carry out longer term work as well. So that if we're starting in a direction and it really looks like with the information we have in the moment, that's that's where our priority should be. And then we find out in two or three years or maybe after a big um disaster or something that that we really need to be going in a different direction. Where is there um space within this prioritization to be adaptable and flexible as well? Um, so I don't, I I think I just gave you all more questions instead of offering you recommendations. But these are the things I'm thinking about and I will just be so eager to hear how you all are solving these problems. Um, so I I am certainly not capable of doing it, but I just so appreciate all the work that you're doing. Um, and and just I'm really grateful for how quickly you've brought so much information together and so many people together. To start thinking about this issue um and and giving us such a great starting point. So. Thank you so much for all of your work and uh for the time with us tonight.
Okay, we'll go to Mayor Brockett and then I will take a turn and then we'll do a a a last round, starting with um. Mayor Brockett.
All right, I'll be quick. Um, just first of all, just an enormous thank you for the incredible volume of work. And of course, we all know how critically important this is, so really appreciate the all hands on deck approach to this. And the report is just uh fantastic. The uh, the plan is is phenomenal, so really grateful to you for all of that. Um, other council members have asked every question that I might have asked, so really appreciate all the intelligent questions from my colleagues. And so just my real quick thing in terms of uh feedback would be um echo what actually Nicole was just saying about um. Well, I'll just say prioritization is of course critically important, um, but I'm, I don't know enough to be the one to say, here's all the orders. I thought Matt had some great suggestions about some specific ones, but really would love for to hear from you all in the next steps. About, you know, an organizational matrix about here's what the most bang for the buck is, here's the most critical needs. And then taking into account um available staff time and then as as Taisha said, the the fiscal notes associated with them. So um, look forward to those next steps in terms of prioritizing the top. Uh, implementation areas and then moving on to getting those done, because of course this is critically important for our society and our community's future. So, thanks again.
Okay, I I think I'll go now. Um. I have a few questions. Um, so this is a large document, a lot of presenters here. Thank you, everyone. And um, I am trying to. Underst- make sure I understand our goal, our goals overall and um, our goals of wildfire protection. And I see on the, there's a page that says, what is the goal of the? W P P on E S one, there's some paragraphs, um. This is ki- this is kind of process language in my mind, not so much outcome. Uh, which maybe this is what we have, but I want to ask, are are these the highest level goals we have when we think about? Our fire protection or the or the best ways to use that? Like, is there something above the C W P P? That would describe trying to.
I'm not sure I have an answer for that. Um. It it's, again, the document is is intended to to be a suggestion of of best management practices. Uh, based on things that work everywhere else, based on, you know, the. Fuels, weather, topography, how to reduce uh home ignitions, uh, all those things. So so I don't know that there's a another level above that outside of 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 real high level policy changes, like we're talking around with code and things like that, but um.
Got it. Okay.
Uh, I can throw in just uh an an outcome, uh, just so you, just to give an idea of what we as a. Uh, a department look at, um, part of our goals, our outcomes when it comes to an actual start. So so essentially what we're trying to be as a community is just live with the concept that wildfire is reality. It's gonna happen, it it even no matter how much hardening we do, it's gonna happen. And so part of our outcomes are being able to confine a fire uh to within a certain uh size. And or or minimize the damage to it. So those are some of the outcomes that that we um live by um as an overarching objective. Um, but I I would also throw in there, and they're not fully developed yet, are are the ones around, how do we get people? Out of harms way? What does success look like there? And um, and and those are, those are yet to be really, really um ferreted out, I would say. So uh, we do have more work to do. I think you make a great point. What is the big overarching, what are the big outcomes here? Um, I would, I would just say it, they're going to be related to the reality that a fire is gonna happen. And so it will be, how quickly can we get people out? No casualties, no fatalities, minimum damage. Um, and quickly returning to a state of normalcy. Those are the kinds of outcomes that we as a group are focused on.
Thank you. Okay, then um, maybe I'll make a a comment at this point then to kind of around the our, your question as for recommendations. So several of my call, of my council members had have talked about. Not even, didn't use the words engaging with the insurance industry, but but really there there were, there were, there was implication of like, we we need to do work to avoid insurance. Uh, you know, bad outcomes in insurance. So I was listening, I've been listening and I I also have that same question, but I now I'm wondering like, is that in the scope of what? You know, we have people working on, because that, you know, that if you think about what that entails, you know, that's a, that's a pretty deliberate part part of 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 work and I. So I guess I'll just offer the comment then that um, when when I'm reading through this, I. I I feel like um, I would be able to give better advice. If I was working from uh something that was kind of like a framework of outcomes and just for what it's worth, what what I'm kind of scribbling here is. There's clearly, there's there's direct, direct-ish outcomes with with respect to to um, to damage from fire. Some of that is human life, some of that is property. To the extent that we're talking about human life, um, somewhere in this document had a kind of a framework of vulnerable groups, or at least like the start of a framework. Within vulnerability or vulnerable groups, um, it's some people that don't have cars, that was specifically pointed out, but then there's people with disabilities and. You know, there's a way to do a taxonomy here to sort of look at and say, well, to the extent that we're we're seeking to avoid human life, loss of human life. There must be some kind of sub set of sub outcomes under that would help us to understand if we're being um, if we're being successful. I I don't know to what extent the racial e- e- equity instrument or the S C R framework would inform that, but. I'd be very, you know, interested to understand if you said, okay, so human life is avoiding the loss of human life is is an outcome. What are kind of the sub outcomes under that? So, I think because um. You know, we have aging population that's gonna have less access to vehicles, we're building a multimodal transportation system and so. Yeah, I guess uh, Councilmember Adams pointed this out, that that people specifically, they don't have cars, um, I would. You'd be able to weigh in maybe more on on my recommendations if I knew like, oh, this is something that that we consider an outcome. So I, that's kind of like the direct stuff and I'm just taking an initial stab at it, but um, it seems like that's implicitly what we're talking about, but I I'm having not, it not being written down and I guess I'm. I guess I'd like to see my, like this written down. And then on maybe like taking another step to like indirectly, there's like a wider set of things and you know, I um. I, everybody here, pretty much all my council members are immediately going to insurance and I was thinking, I wanted to talk about insurance too. That's not wildfires coming on us directly, but that certainly is an indirect effect or, I don't know what what language you want to use. Um, I would also say that the power safety shut offs with Excel, um, those are, you know, that's, we don't run those, we also don't don't run insurance. Um, but the these are things that have a pretty big bearing on our experience with with wildfires and so um. I suppose I would offer that there is perhaps outcomes we do care about that are around kind of wider indirect effects and maybe there's a way to think about that. Maybe it literally is just insurance and avoid, you know, avoiding, avoiding negative impacts with insurance laws and avoiding negative impacts with the power shut offs. But maybe there's something else too. I don't know, but again, if, you know. Don't know if anybody's, we really talked about the power shut offs, but I would, I I would suggest that. Do care about that. Certainly Excel is in the driver's seat, but if if we say as a community that, you know, this is one of our, it's like a sub outcome. Then there's, that implies there's work for us to do to make sure that we're properly engaging with Excel and that's coming back to um, uh, to us. I know that's happening on 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 some fronts, but um, I guess to the extent that we're talking about, what are our goals of of wildfire protection, I would think of that.
Councilmember Shuart, if I might respond also from kind of the citywide perspective on on outcomes and things like that, you're touching on a. A great timely note, we have kind of multiple work efforts converging and this um overall program of wildfire resiliency will touch all of them. And that is the ongoing work we have through our budgeting resilience process to identify. Programmatic level outcomes at short, medium and and long term levels. But then also as we tie this work, um, as I mentioned in the beginning of the presentation, you know, this is a priority action in the strategic plan. And we're also building out kind of that suite of outcomes and measurements that tie to those strategies and those. Sort of macro community level goals. And so I think there is going to be some really nice coming together in the next couple of years as we um further refine that work. Um, and so as the team does that initial prioritization exercise. Um, we look at the data we do have, we identify what are some things that aren't currently being measured that that we should start measuring. Um, I think you'll start to see that threaded um better into the implementation work.
Thank you. Assistant City Manager Pam Davis. So you had, you had the answer then all along, which was, we're, we're, we're working on it, so fine. So that, I I look forward very much to that and I'll just conclude my thought on this one to say that. You, maybe there's a third outcome. In my mind, there is, it's something about making sure we have a. A very good radar for the the emerging or emerging understanding of the climate catastrophe unfolding around us and what that means, not just in the direct sense. But also more broadly, um, this insurance stuff, whatever's happening, i- it's gonna happen fast and if we're not ahead of it, in talking to folks before. You know, there's not gonna be like a lot of leading indicators, but but then this is also probably just one example of more things to come, so. Anyway, in my mind, I I I that would, that would be another outcome I would, I would hope to have, so. Thank you for answering that and then I'll I'll just move on. Um, and I guess it's on insurance specifically, so um, I guess I just want to ask the question. Do do we know what uh, or or can can find out what the insurance industry? Like how they're thinking about, what would it take for Boulder to be, to continue to be an attractive market or to be a relatively attractive market? Like, is that, do we, do we have a finger on that? Or could we get a finger on that?
I I'll jump in for a moment and say, I don't know that we know that and and certainly people can can um, can correct me if I'm wrong, but what I. What I will say is that I think um, Mike, you you touched on it, the Marshall Fire has given us some information. Um, because we've heard, like, we have community members in our name ring communities. Who have actually lived this experience, right, in in ways that have been um horrific. And I think that information, Mike, that you were referencing, that you're able to share with us, I think will give us some insight that we have not. Um, that we have not been able to have. Uh, frankly, since perhaps this community felt some of that same insurance information from the flood. Um, in twenty thirteen, right? And I think we're gonna be gathering that information will allow us. To really have a different conversation and some insight into that very question. So while I don't think that perhaps we have that pulse immediately right now. I I think that there are mechanisms and there are some ways to think about it. And I also think that there are conversations to be had with the county. And perhaps those with the community foundations who have had conversations with other folks um in this arena, so. Um, again, beyond what our scope has been thus far, but I think there have been some folks who have had some conversations that. Uh, may inform some of that, that some of the answers to your questions.
Thank you very much. Okay, then I think I will just leave it with the final very tactical recommendation, um, which is on the subject of insurance. One way or another, I would, I would propose that we we literally ask. We find the right people at insurance companies or in the industry and we we try to get a direct. Query on this. I mean, I know this is gonna be limited with what we can expect to get back, but I just, you know, I would want to try to be as direct as possible about. What what do we need to do from your perspective? I would expect in general, there would be some alignment with what we need to do anyway, but I, but you know, as um. Councilmember Folkers was saying, maybe not, and then so part of, part of this also might be us having a role. Of educating the insurance industry on what what a resilient community looks like, so just, just like. Fo- focusing on this idea that we should try to seek to engage with the industry if we can, maybe, maybe it's harder than, you know. Maybe it's hard, but I'd love that for that to be uh something we try and that's that'll be my recommendations with that. Uh, thank you again. I see uh, Mayor Brockett, did you have a colloquy or?
If I could colloquy real quick, that that I appreciate that last point, Ryan, I think that's very well taken. I've had a couple of conversations in in the community with experts in this area and. Uh, I think in addition to the direct insurance market, the reinsurance market is critical to talk to because it's actually. Their policies that drive so much of the insurance markets uh willingness and the cost and and policies as well, so just want to get that out on the table in terms of engaging.
Okay, thank you for that, Mayor. Um, so that was it for me unless with any, if there's any responses, anything I had, that's fine, otherwise we can um. Nope, messing any screens light up. Okay, let's go to Councilmember Markwiss for a first shot at the, our final, any final closing recommendations or thoughts? Um, Councilmember Markwiss?
Yeah, I just did the first part, so I um. I I'm not gonna make any specific recommendations, just to echo that I support um the goals as Michael uh stated them, just about. Uh, safety, evacuation and prevention, but understanding that fires will happen, so. Prevention will not get us there a hundred percent of the way. Um, and then also echoing the insurance piece and. Just with a, you know, gentle awareness that we may not be in a position of power on this um bargaining table, so. Uh, education is great and resilience, but um, I am hearing too many stories of people losing coverage uh in other parts of the country. So I hope that we can be sensitive and um, in that conversation. Uh, and the and final thing is, I'm. In terms of next steps, I'm hoping that we receive a, just a a recommendation or even just an update. I um, with the, with the proposed budget. And any gaps that are seen, I'm not sure I'd want to go through each of these recommendations personally, I I can't imagine that's the plan, but I just wanted to. Kind of understand where we're going from the study session. I I trust the staff to make the recommendations and they know their budget. Um, so if it's something additional, my guess is it would come to us, but if it's within their existing budget, I'm not so sure. Any thoughts on that?
I don't know if the team wants to uh me to uh talk a little bit about it and certainly they, but I think some of the next steps are to continue to think about. but I think some of the next steps are to continue to think about that prioritization. There is certainly, um, funds within, uh, some of the things that the climate tax, uh, some of the existing monies as we move forward. Um, and we will, they will put forward budget ideas. We are in the midst of budget. It seems like we are always in the midst of budget season, frankly, throughout the year. Um, and we will be evaluating those proposals along with every other proposal as we move forward. But what's critical to me is what is a council priority? What do they have? It's not always about the money. It's also about staff capacity. We can have all the money in the world, but if staff doesn't have the capacity to implement, it doesn't matter. And so we need to think about what is it time for? What is it criticality? That is where prioritization is gonna be critical. Um, and so we will see what moves forward as, uh, the budget process follows and you will see it as we present our budget to you.
Okay, councilmember Adams.
Yes, this is one thing that I didn't bring up in my last thing, and I think it's a nice closing comment. And if there's our, if there are other others, and that is, and Mike, we've talked about this, is the continuum, um, uh, between preparedness, response, and recovery. And, um, you know, sometimes it's different people that are doing the preparedness work versus recovery versus response. And, and sometimes there is some, some similarities. So again, you know, just really trying to think about, um, how do we use the preparedness side to maybe build some of that, you know, recovery staff? So it's not like the first time they see them, when something goes down, you know, they, they, they will have already established relationship with the preparedness side of the house. And so, you know, again, when you're on your worst day, um, having somebody who you've already have a relationship with really matters. So just curious if we can also find ways to, and sometimes there's some silos between the preparedness people and the recovery people. And so, again, I know that you all are working to create more synergies there, but I, I always just think about it from that continuum. And then from a partnership perspective, because the work is so complex, I really appreciated you all laying out all of the different partners that y'all are working with. But I think as we move forward, really, you know, it may be more helpful to know like, in what ways is the city working? What role are they playing in this work? And then of course, just the relationship between the city and the county, which again, I think this, this, you know, department and this work is, is a real exemplar of what that relationship is and can look like for other areas. But again, I don't think that people who aren't in the weeds know how intensely interconnected the intergovernmental relationship is. So we'd really love to lift that up as another area of education so that our community really understands, um, how strong the work is, but also, um, how much of a need to continue to deepen and strengthen as the, um, the demands and, and incidences, um, those billion-dollar disasters, um, become more frequent, unfortunately. So just wanted to, to, to leave us with that more holistic thinking. Thank you.
Councilmember Adams, I just wanted to appreciate you because you give me a second opportunity to appreciate Mike Chard, who really, uh, spearheaded that, uh, tabletop exercise today because it really emphasizes that, um, connection between preparedness and recovery and breaking down those silos. Mike, you did an excellent job, I thought, this morning as you thought about, um, uh, asking folks to think about building trust because is that what you need to bridge an emergency and critical response into recovery? Um, and so I think it is that very issue you were trying to lift up, councilmember, and wanted to take a, a moment to appreciate, um, our director of emergency, uh, or disaster management for that very thing. So thank you, Mike.
Okay, last call for any further thoughts? Going once, going twice. Okay. That's it for this agenda item. Um, City Manager Nuria, do you have anything else?
I do not and just appreciate, uh, such a thoughtful facilitation, councilmember.
Okay, well then with no other items on tonight's agenda, I will close this meeting at 9:30 PM Mountain.
Good, good job, Ryan. Ryan, appreciate it.
Thanks, Ryan. Bye, everyone.
Everybody.
Good night. Great job, councilmember.
Good job.